Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I had to call the meeting to order. Would everyone please turn your attention to Chaplain Commissioner White for invocation and Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of you will be viewing this in a format where you'll automatically have an image of an American flag populate. If you happen to be looking at the agenda, there should be a link to the American flag. And for those of you that are looking at a feed of me, I have an American flag right behind me. So at this time, I'll ask that if you're able to, to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is one nation under God indivisible with liberty.
Is justice for all.
Now I ask that you bow your head for the invocation. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and various stakeholders today as we make decisions that are important for this county and for our greater region and community. Lord, I pray that you will continue to watch over us and guide us as we deal with this COVID-19 pandemic. I especially ask for blessings for those that may have been infected with this virus or perhaps lost a loved one, those that might be struggling on the business front. I just pray that you will bless them, guide them, and lead them out of this just as quickly and painlessly as possible. As always, Lord, I pray for our members of our armed forces, our first responders, and I'm even going to add healthcare professionals into the mix today, groups of people that have all continued to work tirelessly even in the face of this pandemic. So I ask for special blessings for them, and I thank you for them. I give all of these thanks and ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner White, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Miller?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Merman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. Of quorum.
Thank you. We're now moving to accommodations. We have one accommodation presentation from Commissioner Merman this morning. Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and so proud to present this commendation today. And I'll ask, before we get started, is Dr. Ronald Vaughn, is he on the call?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, great. So glad to have you with us. This past February, Dr. Vaughn was named Outstanding Citizen of the Year at the Governor's Luncheon by the Tampa Metro Civitane, a local volunteer service club who has given the award to a prominent community leader annually since 1927. Dr. Vaughn is truly an outstanding man who, for 25 years, has served as the president of the University of Tampa. And those of us that have lived in this community a long time remember what the University of Tampa looked like 25 years ago. So he has certainly brought that a long way to very success, a very big success. And during his tenure, he's helped the institution achieve academic excellence. This commendation, which I'll read into the record, illustrates his accomplishments. And I will read the commendation to you, Dr. Vaughn, right now. It says, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Dr. Ronald Vaughn on the occasion of his 25th anniversary as president of the University of Tampa, a significant milestone for a visionary leader. Throughout his life, Dr. Vaughn has always believed in the importance of self-reliance. He worked as a lifeguard, a barista, and helped put himself through college by selling jewelry before earning his bachelor and master's degree from Indiana State University. After a successful marketing career, he segued into academics at the University of Tampa in 1984. He served with distinction as the institution's coordinator of the Department of Marketing, director of the MBA program, dean of the College of Business and Graduate Studies, and its co-chief academic officer before being appointed as president of the university in 1995. For 25 years, he dedicated himself to unleashing the university's potential as a growing institution. He helped increase its annual budget from $28 to $330 million for the 2019 academic year. Under his tenure, full-time enrollments have more than quadrupled, over 600 new faculty, staff, and vendor contact positions have been added, and academic programs have been expanded to more than 200 areas of study." For his accomplishments, Dr. Vaughn received many accolades, including the Tampa Metro Civitane's Outstanding Citizen of the Year Award, which is a real testament to his steadfast leadership. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Dr. Ronald Vaughn for his 25 years of service to the University of Tampa, wishes him many more years of success, and this is, of course, executed this 20th day of May, 2020, signed by all seven commissioners. And Dr. Vaughn, congratulations for everything you've done for this community and for the University of Tampa, and would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, everyone. I'll just say, any great individual or organizational success always comes with the help of many people. I'd like to thank you for their recognition, but I would do that on behalf of the many everyday heroes at the university that work quietly in the background. And I'd like to say thank you to the county commissioners and the administration as well for your leadership. We appreciate your service to the community, particularly at this very difficult time. So thank you. We appreciate what you do. Thank you for the honor.
Absolutely. And thank you for joining us today. I know this is unusual. And just thank you for everything you do to make this city and county a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Mr. President, thank you very much for your service, and thank you very much for being with us this morning. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Les.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Merrill, change to the agenda.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Kemp. I'm sorry, I don't see where I can bring up.
I'm sorry. I can hear you.
Can you hear me now better?
That's better.
Okay.
Is your hand working?
I just want to thank, I just want to thank Mr. Vaughn for his service, and I want to also acknowledge his wife, Renee.
Thank you. She's a tremendous partner.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to make sure about that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, could you check your hand and see if it's working?
I will do that as we...
Commissioner Kemp, did you hear me?
Yes, I did. I heard you.
Could you check your hand and see if it's working?
I can't seem to bring up that.
I can't hear you, Commissioner Kemp.
Chairman, this is James Brewer. Can I help assist Commissioner Kemp?
Right.
Yes.
Commissioner Kemp, so at the bottom of WebEx, you have the Participants queue. It's the round-headed Participants button there at the bottom. When you activate our Participants queue, it'll open the queue on the right. When you guide your mouse down your name in that queue, you should be able to see the Raise the Hand feature. Is that showing up?
Now, I had hit that before thinking that, and I, it's, that is not, oh, I see, it's on my other screen. Got it.
Test it. Test it to see what happens.
There we go.
Got it. Okay, you're working now. Now, click it, click it off. Okay, we're good to go.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Ron, and give Renee her best. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Merrill, change to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we just have a couple changes. We have one deferral, A29, which is a sole-source contract for deliveries, actually with Merrill Brothers, but it's no relationship, it's spelled differently, for transportation, treatment, and recycling of de-watered bio-salads at the Pasco County Bio-Salads Facility that's being deferred to a date to be determined. We have one revision to F3, which is Commissioner Merman's item. That had to do with sending a letter to Governor DeSantis in support of Senate Bill 1326. It was actually incorrectly cited in the agenda item. It is Senate Bill 1326, and that relates to the Department of Children and Families has established a pilot project. We have one item, one consent item removed for highlighting by Commissioner Overman, that's A9, and that has to do with the Commissioners' Human Trafficking Commission. And we have then just a couple of time certainties. We have two public hearings beginning at 10:00 a.m. D1 is the public hearing for the proposed ordinance amendment to adopt new parks impact, a new parks impact fee study, and to make changes to the parks' impact fee rates. And second public hearing, D2, is to adopt an ordinance amending the county's mobility fee program ordinance to accept the study and make changes affecting the mobility fee rates. And 11, we have a special appearance, E1, by Dr. Eric Eisenberg, Dean of College of Arts and Sciences and Professor of Communication at USF, to provide an update on a community engagement proposal around the reopening of the community. Those are the changes to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Move the changes.
Have a motion back, Commissioner Merman. Second, back to Commissioner White to move the change to the agenda, seeing no further discussion. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving to public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, as requested at the same time when you address the Board, that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issue. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comment at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak during the meeting will be able to do so by completing the online public comment form found at hillsborocounty.org/speakup. You'll be required to provide your name and telephone number on the line, on the online form. The information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The Chair will call all speakers by name in the order in which they have completed the online public comment form. Prior authorization is on a first-come, first-served basis. An audio call-in number will be provided to the participants that have completed the form after it is received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by the Chair by name. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before speakers speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. On addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly. Now, I have one person that's speaking not on a public hearing item. It's Mr. Kevin O'Neill. Did he call in? Did Kevin O'Neill call in?
Commissioner Miller? This is Chris Landby.
Pardon me? Yes, Mr. McCarron.
This is Chris Landby. He has not called in yet.
Okay, all right. I think that was the only person that was, that has signed up that wasn't for a public, for a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, well, he hasn't called in yet, so we're going to go ahead and move forward with the, with the agenda because we had no other speakers except those who were calling in for the public hearing. So, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Self moved. Commissioner, now moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp.
Second by Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White to approve the consent agenda, seeing no further discussion. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, Commissioners, we have 45 minutes before your public hearing, so we'll go to the regular agenda, beginning with Item B1, which is Conservation and Environmental Lands. Assuming that Forest Turberville will speak to this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. All right. Good morning, Forest Turberville Conservation Environmental Lands Management. The recommended Board motion in front of you today is divided into two parts. The first is to request your approval of a contract with Ronald S. Hoffman to acquire approximately 5.7 acres for $1 million located within the Rocky Brushy Creek ELAP site, and also to authorize staff to complete the transaction in accordance with the contract. Pursuant to ELAP Ordinance 08-16, Board also designates the portions of these properties located west of the Upper Tampa Bay Trail as an acquisition of convenience so that these areas will not be restricted under the ELAP ordinance. And as detailed in the background, staff will provide recommendations to the Board regarding their future use. The purchase price is less than the lowest appraised value of the two appraisals that were prepared for the county and received. Existing ELAP bonds will fund capital acquisition costs of $1,025,000 and capital management costs not to exceed $30,000. Additional annual operating costs will cost not exceed $500 and can be accommodated within the current ELAP management budget for this fiscal year. Staff will include additional operating costs as part of the next annual budget submission. This action does not increase the current budget for the ELAP acquisition or ELAP restoration accounts. Part two of the recommended Board motion is to request your approval of a budget amendment to realign $30,000 within the ELAP Bond 2019 Fund currently budgeted in the ELAP acquisition project to the ELAP Restoration CIP project in order to provide funding for exotic plant removal and fencing throughout the site.
Move approval. This is Commissioner Kemp.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp.
Second, Commissioner White.
Motion by Commissioner White. I don't see any discussion. Commissioner Kemp, you still can't raise that hand, huh?
I did. I have it up.
You recognize.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I'm very thrilled about this acquisition. This is the number-one park amenity in Hillsborough County. 300,000 people a year use the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, and I'm, I'm just, I couldn't be happier about moving on this. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands, so please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Commissioner Smith?
Sorry, I had to ask, yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, Commissioners, we have 45 minutes before your public hearing, so we'll go to the regular agenda, beginning with Item B1, which is Conservation and Environmental Lands. Assuming that Forest Turberville will speak to this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good morning, Forest Turberville Conservation Environmental Lands Management. The recommended Board motion in front of you today is divided into two parts. The first is to request your approval of a contract with Ronald S. Hoffman to acquire approximately 5.7 acres for $1 million located within the Rocky Brushy Creek ELAP site, and also to authorize staff to complete the transaction in accordance with the contract. Pursuant to ELAP Ordinance 08-16, Board also designates the portions of these properties located west of the Upper Tampa Bay Trail as an acquisition of convenience so that these areas will not be restricted under the ELAP ordinance. And as detailed in the background, staff will provide recommendations to the Board regarding their future use. The purchase price is less than the lowest appraised value of the two appraisals that were prepared for the county and received. Existing ELAP bonds will fund capital acquisition costs of $1,025,000 and capital management costs not to exceed $30,000. Additional annual operating costs will cost not exceed $500 and can be accommodated within the current ELAP management budget for this fiscal year. Staff will include additional operating costs as part of the next annual budget submission. This action does not increase the current budget for the ELAP acquisition or ELAP restoration accounts. Part two of the recommended Board motion is to request your approval of a budget amendment to realign $30,000 within the ELAP Bond 2019 Fund currently budgeted in the ELAP acquisition project to the ELAP Restoration CIP project in order to provide funding for exotic plant removal and fencing throughout the site.
Move approval. This is Commissioner Kemp.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp. I don't see any discussion. Commissioner Kemp, you still can't raise that hand, huh?
I did. I have it up.
You recognize.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I'm very thrilled about this acquisition. This is the number-one park amenity in Hillsborough County. 300,000 people a year use the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, and I'm, I'm just, I couldn't be happier about moving on this. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands, so please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you all very, very much. Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
Your next item would be B3, which is a procurement services item relating to affordable housing projects.
Good morning, Scott Stromer Procurement Services. B3 is asking the Board to award to the seven highest-ranked proposers the opportunity to provide multifamily rental canoe construction, multifamily homeownership, new construction projects, or multifamily rental acquisition rehabilitation projects for a mix of eligible households, including low-income and very low-income, through the Home Investment Partnership Program, Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, the State Housing Initiatives Partnership, or the SHIP Program, and the Local Housing Fund, the HOPE Act, all of which are administered by the Affordable Services, Affordable Housing Services Department. Total recommended award amount is $19,761,193. Agreements will be negotiated with the recommended proposers and subsequently presented to the Board for approval at a future date. In this case, there were no certified disadvantaged business or registered small business enterprise firms for the specified services, therefore no participation goal or set aside was established for the procurement. Even though no participation goal or set aside was established, the opportunity to submit a bid as a prime was always available. Procurement Services Department does recommend approval, and the Director of Affordable Housing Services Department, Cheryl Howell, is here and available to answer any questions you may have about these important projects.
Okay.
Move approval. Second, this is Commissioner Kemp.
Motion by Commissioner Merrill. Second by Commissioner Kemp. And I see Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you, Chair. I am very, very excited to see this move forward. We have, as a Board and as a county, moved to focus on the greatest need we have in addition to transportation, into building affordable housing. The process in the backup was impressive to see how we go about making these decisions, how we go about supporting those organizations that support the need of those that need affordable housing, and the structure and the decision-making that is made to help those that are interested in affordable housing, our true advocates. HOPE, we're very pleased to see the backup, and I'm very excited to see this move forward. We, as a county, made a commitment to affordable housing, and it's evident by this most, this wonderful procurement that provides for the building and development of affordable housing all throughout the county. And I'm sure Michelle Howell will provide us with some guidance on where these are going to occur, but I'm pleased to see that all of them are, are near or very close to transit resources to assist those that choose and are able to move to these locations when they're developed, will have options on how they spend their money, and have options in transit in how they get to work and play, and doctor's appointments, and all those other things. So thank you very much for bringing this forward, and I'm very pleased to see that the department has been successful in finding partners to help us build affordable housing. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you. And I just want to thank Ms. Howell also for the work that's gone into this, and, and the, our backup material was very thorough and shows exactly where the funding for each project is coming from. It's really important to have, because of all the community concern, the public concern, and from HOPE's involvement, certainly, it's, it's really important that we have this level of information publicly available to, to the people who are concerned about it and to us, so we understand where this funding for each project is coming from. All the units are affordable to 80% and below AMI. That makes me very happy. Several of the units are designated at 50% and below. That makes me even happier. Habitat for Humanity is receiving funds. It's a great, it's a great collection and really good work by Ms. Howell. I want to just compliment her on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank Ms. Howell. I think this is the most important thing. You know, I've been on the Board for three and a half years. This is one of the most important things that we have ever moved forward for lifting up so many people's lives in Hillsborough County. It is just so important, and we are going to provide this opportunity in a way that we have never done before, that I know of, and in a huge way with the resources that we have dedicated here. And I know, I want to thank HOPE because I really don't know that this, we would have understood the need or been motivated to do as much as we have done here, which is, this is just great. This is more than the state, even if they had had those funds, would have been giving in a single year, and I hope that we do get, continue. I know that for the first time, the state has dedicated those Sadowski funds to us that could really bring this home, but, you know, because of the circumstances this year, I don't know what's going to happen moving that forward, but this is a great, great moment for Hillsborough County, and in another year or two, it'll be a great moment for probably hundreds of families.
Minority, disadvantaged minority slash disadvantaged women's enterprise program participation goal was 18%, but the contractor, the recommended person, company to get this is, wants to achieve almost 40%, 40%. I know we get ridiculed sometimes about what we're doing, what we're not doing, minority businesses, but when, when you, when we establish an 18% and then the vendor comes back and says, "No, no, no, I don't want to do 18%, I'll establish a goal of 39.39%," that's astronomical, astronomical. So I want to say thank you for working with the vendor and getting them to do that, and I'm trying to see if I see the hands here. I do not. So we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
that could really bring this home. But, you know, because of the circumstances this year, I don't know what's going to happen moving that forward. But this is a great, great moment for Hillsborough County, and in another year or two, it'll be a great moment for probably hundreds of families.
Minority, disadvantaged minority slash disadvantaged businesswomen's enterprise program participation goal was 18%. But the contractor, the recommended person, company to get this, is it wants to achieve almost 40%, 40%. I know we get ridiculed sometimes about what we're doing, what we're not doing, minority businesses. But when we establish an 18% and then the vendor comes back and says, "No, no, no, I don't want to do 18%. I'll establish a goal of 39.39%." That's astronomical, astronomical. So I want to say thank you for working with the vendor and getting the vendor to do that. And I'm trying to see if I see the hands here. I do not. So we have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp? Kemp?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
Your next item would be Board Appointments, F1, for a land use hearing officer.
Who's handling that?
Probably Luanne or Rick, one and two.
No, I'm sorry. It's Rick. I'm going to do it. We have three openings. However, number 13, Richard Shontz has withdrawn his application. Commissioner Miller?
Wait. Commissioner Smith, I would like to ask a couple things about the contract before we get started.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. So Commissioners, if you will look at page one of the agreement, and that is page seven of the PDF, and please find paragraph four at the bottom of that page. Okay, there. You'll see the term is for four years, which just seems too long to lock us in, particularly as we may be hiring some new land use hearing officers in this batch. So I'd like to suggest that we make that two years with two successive one-year renewals, and, let me see where this came up on me a little fast. Two successive one-year renewals and, oh yeah, here it is. And so that all adds up to four years, but it provides more flexibility.
Second?
Thanks. Well, wait just a minute because I want to add a little something else. As I went over this paragraph with our attorneys, it just seemed best to simplify the language there while we're at it because it just repeats a whole lot of stuff that's in the Land Development Code about how we remove a land use hearing officer. So instead of all that, we can just say in the contract that they can be removed in accordance with the Land Development Code, just to clean that up a bit. So my motion is to adjust paragraph four, to make that simplification and to change the term from four years to two years. I worked on this with the county attorneys, obviously. So my motion is to amend the Agreement for Services for the Land Use Hearing Officer as follows. Amend paragraph four and paragraph five to change the term of the appointment to a period of two years with two successive one-year renewal periods. And amend paragraph four to provide that a land use hearing officer may be removed for violations of this agreement or in accordance with the Land Development Code as amended. So it just pulls in the Land Development Code simply that way. So that's my motion.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Miss Beck, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
What has been the practice for hiring of other land use hearing officers? Were they given a four-year contract?
Yes, the Land Development Code provides for, it actually spelled out that they can have up to four years. So I think the past practice in the contracts was simply to have a four-year contract.
Have we had any, have we had any cases where we had to remove a land use officer before those four years, they hit those four years at all?
Not to my knowledge.
So in the past, we had four years of contracts with land use hearing officers, and we have had no issues where we had to remove a land use officer before the four-year term is up?
Again, not to my knowledge. I don't know if Adam would know something about that, but not to my knowledge. I don't recall that.
So Commissioner Smith, why now?
Excuse me, but the current land use hearing officer, Mr. Scorola's contract is three years, not four years. So it varies. And it just, because we may be hiring some new land use hearing officers, it seems like wise to give the board more flexibility to say two years plus two consecutive one-year renewals. And that way, I mean, as I say, Mr. Scorola is for three years. We just hired a new county administrator for two years. Four years is a lot, and we'll span different boards. It just seems like it makes sense with any contract to give the board as much flexibility as we can, and these are important positions. So it seems to me that two years is good. There may be other people wanting to apply for the job or other circumstances may come up. By the way, the way the contract is written, the land use hearing officer can walk away with 60 days' notice. So the contract seems to bind the board much more than the land use hearing officer, and that just doesn't seem wise to me when they can walk away with 60 days' notice, and we're stuck for two years unless we have this, all this stuff that's in the Land Development Code.
Okay. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I think the only question I have is if we have historically asked for four years, and that may have limited the applicants because they know that they might be needed to make a four-year commitment to this. We may have not had some individuals interested in applying that actually are very qualified for the job but can't make a four-year commitment. As you mentioned, Commissioner Smith, they could resign at any time. But having a two-year contract, actually with the option to continue for four years on the renewal basis, gives someone the ability to really truly be committed to this effort and gives us the flexibility in contracts. So I'll support the motion. I don't see the harm in moving to this direction compared to where we've been. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please call the roll on F1.
Miller?
No.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You're coming in pretty low.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had the, yes.
There you go. Thank you. Murman?
Yeah, no.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Miller, Murman, and Hagan voted no.
Okay. Most adopted. Now go back to the appointments.
All right. Commissioner Miller?
Number eight, number nine, number 15.
Number eight, nine, and 15. Commissioner Overman?
Number 10, number 14, and number 11.
Number 10, number 11, and number 14.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner White?
Nine, 10, and 14.
Nine, 10, and 14. Commissioner Murman?
Eight, nine, and 11.
Eight, nine, and 11. Commissioner Hagan?
Eight, nine, and 14.
Eight, nine, and 14. Commissioner Smith?
Commissioner Smith?
10, sorry, 10, 12, and 15.
10, 12, and 15. Commissioner Kemp?
10, 12, and 15.
10, 12, and 15. Susan Finch and Pamela Jo Hatley have four votes. And we have, Mark Albin has three votes. Porter has two votes. Oh, I'm sorry. Carol Van Gelder has three votes. So it'll be between number eight and number 14.
Now, Mr. Ven, let me say this. Speaking with Mr. Merrill about this, if we can't get three hearing officers, we can go with two. If we cannot get the three, so we have Finch and Pamela Jo Hatley. So if we want to take another vote to try to get a third, we can. But if we want to just go with the two we have, we can do that. So let's try and see if we can get a third one on there at this point. If we can't, then we just go with the two. Okay. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I would just like to have an opportunity to relook these over for another time, and I would just...
We don't have time for that, Commissioner Smith, because we are behind so far now. The workload is astronomical. We got to get these people onboard and moving now. So we don't have time to come back another meeting and try to come over again.
You just said, though, that we don't have to hire a third, correct?
Right, right. If we get a third today, let's do that today.
Well, I think we could, because, I think we could put off hiring a third for today, as you said, as I understood you saying.
No, no, I didn't say that.
Okay.
Let's try to get a third today. I said, if we can't get a third today, we just go with two. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, and just to double check, we do have three candidates with three votes, by my count. Number eight, number 14, and number 15. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, and number 15, I'd like to just point out that number 15 has experience both in the law and in planning. And I have spoken with him and spoken with some people who know him, and I think he's just very impressive, and I wanted to point that out, that he has actually taught community planning at USF. And he's been the director of planning in a rural Genesee County, New York, as well as the urban city of Schenectady, New York. He has practiced law as rural leaders, but also been Assistant State Attorney and Assistant Public Defender in Polk County. So he's got broad-based, both legal and planning experience in government, both urban and rural. And I think this job really was tailor-made for him. So I just want to point those things out from his resume to you all while we make the next round.
Okay, let's call the roll again for, see if we get a third person selected.
Commissioner Miller?
Number 15.
Number 15. Commissioner Overman?
15.
15. Commissioner White?
15.
Commissioner Murman?
Well, looks like it's lining up for 15, so I guess I'll jump onboard. 15.
15. Commissioner Hagan?
Eight.
Eight. Commissioner Smith?
15.
And Commissioner Kemp?
15.
15. So it'll be Dwight Wells. Susan Finch, Pamela Jo Hatley, and Dwight Wells.
Motion to confirm.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Murman to confirm the appointments. Seeing the further discussion, please call to vote. I mean, please call to roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
That brings us to Commissioner Miller's item F2.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. Members, I put this on the agenda before the governor sent out his last executive order. So I'm going to ask, before I go any further on this, I'm going to ask the county attorney, Miss Beck, to comment on what the governor did concerning virtual meetings in his last executive order. Miss Beck?
Yes, sir. This is Christine Beck. Originally, in the governor's order, he, in reference to Order Number 2069, which is the order that allows for virtual meetings and does not require or waives the requirement for a physical quorum. Originally, that was extended through Phase One. However, we didn't know how long Phase One would be in effect. And then, as Commissioner Miller stated, I think on the last Friday, when the governor issued Order 20-123, he does reference Order 2069, which is the order that allows for virtual meetings. And in Order 20-123, he extended it for, quote, "the duration of that order." So it is currently extended, but we don't know exactly what the end date would be.
Okay. Thank you, Miss Beck. So at this point, even though he extended it through the end of Phase One, we don't know when Phase One is going to end. And as he moves into Phase Two, we don't know if he's going to extend the opportunity for us, other bodies like ours, to meet virtually. I think it's important that we do have the opportunity to meet virtually. I think we need to have a discussion at this point as to if we still want to do that. I think we need to do that. There are many, many things, and talking, Mr. Merrill, that we would have to try to do if we did not continue to meet virtually, and some of them will be astronomical efforts on behalf of our staff and ourselves to try to do that. And at this point, I don't know how we are able to do that within the next month or two. I don't know. So before I make a motion to send the letter to the governor, ask encouraging him to please extend the order past probably Phase One as he moves into Phase Two, I'd like to get some comments of how you all are feeling about trying to extend our opportunity to meet virtually while our staff is trying to work whatever procedures and policies that are adhering to the CDC concerning us getting back together to meet. I can tell you right now, I'm really concerned, not only for my health, for all of us. There are some of us that are over 65. I'm not going to call the other person's name. There are some of us that have health issues, and it concerns me. But the fact of the matter is, is that we need to make a decision if we want to send this letter to the governor and how we're going to work if we continue to have virtual meetings. And I can tell you, Mr. Merrill's here. He's working with staff. It is a major, major, major undertaking. So at this point, I'd like to have a discussion on that, if you don't mind, and I'm going to call on Commissioner Murman. I saw her head first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for those comments because that's really what I'm thinking. We cannot, would not be able to have a personal meeting here in this building. It just is not, would not be safe, would not adhere to the guidelines. I think going off-site is going to cost way too much money. We're still in very uncertain economic times, and I think...
And, um, I think the virtual meetings have worked well for us so far. And I think we should just, uh, continue along that line. So I'm definitely in support of staying with the virtual meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Murman. Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you, Chair, for taking a leadership on this particular issue. Um, as Commissioner Murman and yourself rec- recognize, uh, hosting public meetings where many people would need to attend, all of us would need to be in the same place. And, and the effort it would take to accommodate that, um, it is, uh, would be mammoth and very expensive. We're able to actually read, reach a lot of folks and actually get a lot of business done this way. And I'm very pleased to see and would support sending this letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you. Um, yes, and thank you, uh, Commissioner Miller, for, for bringing this forward. Um, on Friday, the U.S. House of Representatives voted to allow remote voting during this pandemic. Meanwhile, the U.S. Supreme Court has changed its procedures to allow arguments to be heard by teleconference with justices participating remotely. Uh, this is happening in government all across our coun, our country. Um, one representative, uh, the U.S. Congress said, "The best place you can find to get the coronavirus is indoors, in an enclosed room, with a lot of people and a lot of talk." And he said, "That's the definition of Congress." And actually, that's the definition of government. Um, any one of our meetings could turn into a super-spreeder event. And it's our responsibility to make sure that that does not happen for the sake of the health and safety of our community. Um, office buildings like County Center are liable to become the next concentrated hubs for spreading coronavirus. If we're not careful, they can be the next cruise ships, the next meatpacking plants on the news. Uh, and we don't want that to happen, um, to, to be the hub of multiple cases of COVID spreading throughout the community. So whatever we can do to, um, keep our community safe in that regard, um, I support wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank you, Commissioner Miller, for bringing this forward. I think it's very important, and I'm in total support, um, not only for the reasons said before, and you, you put it well, Commissioner Smith, but, um, they've also are finding that, um, I, some of the newest things is prolonged exposure over a period of time inside a building is, um, is, that would make sense, because you would have more of the virus generated, uh, by anyone in there. So I think it is a dangerous situation. I've been trying to think about how possibly, um, to, uh, you know, safely, uh, meet in person again. And I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. So I, I totally am supportive of this, and, and thank you for raising it, Commissioner Miller.
You're welcome. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think I probably have a, a different opinion here, maybe the only one. Um, I'm in support of extending the virtual meetings for another month or so. But I do feel we need to start, uh, making arrangements to meet in person. Uh, the economy is starting to open up, and I feel government should as well. Uh, we still need to take all precautions we can in doing so, but we cannot operate, uh, virtually indefinitely. So, um, I'm, I'm supportive of, you know, staying the course for the next month or so. But we need to start making plans, uh, to, to operate in person.
Okay. All right, I, I've seen a more hands, uh, Ms. Ms. Beck, let me ask you.
Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Miller?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner White, I didn't see your hand. Yeah, I'm sorry, I got you, okay.
Oh, okay. Um, well, Commissioner Hagan, you're, you're not the lone wolf on this one. I, I agree with you. I think it's, uh, time to, sooner than later, you know, get back to work in person. Uh, I am going to support, uh, Commissioner Miller's item, um, in the interest of being collegial. And I have no issue with continuing to meet, uh, virtually for a while. But I, I would like to see us, though, set a trajectory to, uh, to begin in-person meetings again just as quickly as possible. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank those county employees that have not had the luxury of, of being able to work virtually and those folks that have remained out there on the front line. Um, I'm sure I speak on behalf of the entire board, uh, when I send my thanks and encourage you to keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Merrill, is anything you want to add concerning if we ever come back, what we may have to do?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at, um, this from all different angles. And as I mentioned, uh, to you, we'll, we'll have a memo coming out to the board either later today or tomorrow that lays out a, um, our plan for, uh, for reopening county facilities and services. Um, although services have never been discontinued throughout all of this, um, last three months, we've been providing services, uh, virtually or in other ways. But, um, the plan that you'll see does have phases. Each phase gets triggered by cer- certain metrics related back to, uh, the trajectory of cases, the, uh, capacity of hospitals and so forth. But the, but the plan that you're going to get has the basic assumption that we, we on the administration side will continue to telecommute, um, wherever we can, for the reasons that were mentioned, um, by Commissioner Smith and Kemp and others. The particular problem with County Center is the elevators. And, I mean, as you know, uh, we've got twenty-eight floors. And the only way people can move really is up and down elevators. You can only put so many people in an elevator safely. And that just logistically doesn't really work in terms of efficiency, safety, and so forth. Um, wherever we cannot telecommute, uh, employees, we have made sure that, uh, they are safe. We'll continue to have, uh, personal protection equipment and protocols. Uh, we'll put up plexiglass where we can. But, um, you know, with all the work that I've been doing over the last three months with public health advisors and officials, it really still is a situation where, um, the, the greater odds that we can create to avoid the transmission, the better off we are. And, and one of the best ways to do that is by limiting, uh, physical exposure. Uh, the boardroom is a particularly challenged. It is really relatively small. And we would not be able to get very many of the public in the room, just for spacing. Other counties and across the state, and I believe City Council in Tampa, either are or have or are considering using facilities like, uh, convention centers to hold their meetings, because you have very large rooms. But I, I, I'm not aware, many of, of the counties are actually doing it. It is, it is costly. It, it is, from a logistical point of view, very difficult, uh, to continue to have to set up and take down, and set up and take down. So, uh, you know, I, I would certainly support continuing virtual meetings for some time. I would recommend the board always look to our public health officials. We have advisors, public health advisors at USF. Uh, that is really the basis for our phase plan that you're going to see. It's the basis for the governor's plan. It's the basis for everyone's plan. Um, and, um, until there is a vaccine, until there's earned immunity, there really is, is no way to avoid the challenge of putting a lot of people in a confined space. So with that, I'll stop.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize. Commissioner Hagan?
You probably have to put your hand down.
Okay. Ms. Beck, let me ask you a question. Uh, in the language that I was going to make a motion on, do we still need to have it as executive order twenty-sixty-nine? Or does that need to be changed?
No, that's still the correct reference to the order regarding virtual meetings.
Okay. Well, I'm going to pass the gavel to, uh, the vice chair and make a motion that we direct the letter to be sent to Governor Ron DeSantis on behalf of the Hillsborough County Public Commissioners, respectfully requesting Governor DeSantis to extend executive order twenty-sixty-nine local government public hearings throughout the duration of the state of emergency. That's my motion.
Second. Second.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody.
We have a motion by Commissioner Miller. We have a second by Commissioner Kemp and Smith.
And Murman.
And, and Murman. Okay, um, any comment?
No, no questions.
Okay, excellent. Um, please take the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Murman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Merrill. Mr. Merrill. Did he leave us?
Here, sorry. Yeah, so we're at ten o'clock, just a couple minutes past ten. So we can go back now to our time certance to our two public hearings, beginning with B1.
Commissioner, this is Cameron Clark. I'm sorry, this is Cameron Clark, Assistant Attorney, sorry, Mr. Chair. Um, the first item, B1, is an amendment to the impact fee ordinance to, uh, adopt a new park impact fee study that will replace the study that was adopted in the nineteen eighties. It also creates a three-year phase-in schedule as discussed by the board at their April twentieth workshop. Uh, and, um, it would start assessing the new fee presently as it's drafted. It would address the fee at fifty percent starting this September. Uh, it would up to seventy-five percent in September of twenty-one, and then go to a hundred percent in September of twenty-twenty-two. However, these percentages and dates are a policy decision, uh, and the board can modify those today. Um, it creates a periodic update of the park impact fee study every three years. This is a policy decision that would update, uh, this, it would create a schedule that keeps it consistent with changes the board already adopted to the fire, rescue, and school impact fees. Um, it removes obsolete text and provides language ensuring consistency with state law. And as presently drafted, the ordinance would take effect on September first of twenty-twenty. Uh, this is a public hearing. Um, I'm here, obviously, uh, staff is here, and the consultant that generated this study is also here, if there are any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we're now moving to public hearing. Um, the first speaker is Eric Garduno.
Yes, Commissioner.
That's right, you recognize, good morning.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Eric Garduno, and I am government affairs director for the Bay Area Apartment Association. We are a nonprofit association representing the apartment industry across the twelve counties surrounding Tampa Bay. Our members are apartment owners, homeowners, developers, and suppliers who provide professional services to apartment communities. I come before you today to express our deep concern with proposed impact fees under consideration by this commission. You're considering two impact fees today, but there are five different fees that are set to increase. And collectively, they more than double what is currently being collected for these fees. Some of these fees actually increase by more than just double. Raising fees to the levels proposed would be more than just a shock to the system. It is the lightning strike that could stop the beating heart of multifamily investment in the county. Right now, there are four thousand four hundred sixty apartment units currently under construction, with a little over eighteen hundred projected to be delivered within the next twelve months. New apartment construction in our region totals one point seven billion in investment. However, that investment is not guaranteed in the future. Banks and other investors who finance the construction of these new apartment communities have their pick of investment opportunities across the state, and really, across the country. We are competing against Jacksonville and Raleigh and many other cities for these investment dollars. Adding what amounts to millions more endurance fees will send many of these investors packing. And we fear significantly slowing new construction starts of apartment communities. By way of analogy, this is like your favorite hamburger restaurant that sells a five-dollar meal deal. Overnight, they're increasing the price for that meal to eleven bucks or more for some of these.
Mr. Garduno, your time is up, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker, Wendy Malinkovich.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. Good morning, um, honorable commissioners. My name is Wendy Malinkovich. I'm a regional manager for Royal American Management. We manage apartment communities throughout the Tampa Bay region, including in Hillsborough County. I am also the vice president of the Bay Area Apartment Association. I come to you today as a professional with twenty plus years of experience in the apartment industry. Um, obviously, everyone knows the economy is in trouble. Unemployment is up, and will probably get worse before it gets better. Despite this, we are hiring right now, um, along with many other companies. Uh, my company right now has openings in St. Pete for, um, property, staff, um, and all over the state of Florida. Um, I know others in the industry are also hiring. In fact, there are enough open positions across companies in my industry that the Bay Area Apartment Association is holding a job fair in June so that we can go ahead and put these displaced workers back to work. We, as an industry, are striving to do our part to help move local economy back to where it belongs. We would appreciate if the commission could also do their part by not raising the impact fees at this time. Raising impact fees will not only drive away investment in the new apartments, but will also kill jobs. There are eight thousand construction jobs working on building apartment communities in our region today. If impact fees are raised, construction on new apartments will slow. Given the size of the proposed impact fee increase, we believe that new construction will slow significantly. As this happens, there won't be work for many of these eight thousand construction workers in the coming months. Once built, apartment communities hire for a number of positions. Community manager, leasing, assistant managers, maintenance superintendent, maintenance techs, groundkeepers, you name it, we hire. Each apartment community not built means fewer jobs. In addition to onsite staff, we routinely bring in outside professionals. Plumbers, electricians, roofers, pool service professionals, and a host of other services provided. Many of these professional services are provided a small, family-owned business. Every apartment community not built takes away from them as well. Given the state of our economy, the commission should do all it can to support, to stimulate growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Mott singer.
Yes, uh, good morning, commissioners. Jennifer Mott singer, representing the Tampa Bay Builders Association. My comments are applicable to both of these fees. You know, over the years, we've supported just about everything you've asked of us. But because of the pandemic, you've not been able to conduct any public outreach. So no one in the public has been able to understand or ask questions about these studies. So I'm not going to speak to their validity today. But our industry is deemed essential, and that means we're still going to work every day unless we've been laid off. We go to work with all these new rules that we've adapted to because we are proud to continue to build the American dream of homeownership. And people want that more than ever right now, because they want to feel safe and secure in their new clean home. And we're doing that. But remember, we live here, too. Our kids are not in school. We have a hard time with empty grocery stores. And we, too, are navigating this new reality. So please consider your timing this morning. Please consider that your actions may result in an immediate seven percent increase in the price of a new home. And you all know, the people that will be affected most are new young families who can afford it the least. Now, we have no way of knowing what's going to happen in the next few weeks. But I do know that you don't have a plan to spend these fees. So what is the harm in waiting to see what direction the world is going in before you decide to push sprawl further and further out by making such a dramatic increase? We're forced to go find cheaper and cheaper land, make that ballot sheet work. Or, the more likely scenario, is that the building will continue in other counties, but more jobs will be lost due to the homes that are not going to be built, because this increase cannot be absorbed. Growth and prosperity, they're not our problem in this county. Congestion is the problem. And just because you have the money doesn't mean you're going to spend it. If you're serious about solving these problems, find some of these projects that will help congestion instead of just blaming everything on us. This problem didn't happen overnight. I was born and raised here. This problem didn't happen overnight. I was born and raised here. I've been here for forty-three years. It's not going to get solved until you start spending some of that six point six two billion dollars that you guys control. Please don't double these fees today. Have some compassion for those who will be caught in the ripple effect of your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Kent Bailey? Kent Bailey? Mr. McElroy, Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bailey?
Hello?
Mr. Yes, Mr. Bailey?
Uh, Kent Bailey here.
You recognize. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank Kent Bailey, Chair of the Tampa Bay Chair Club, speaking on behalf of fourteen thousand members and supporters. I I want to point out to the County Commission, in the wake of the two thousand eight economic collapse, several counties dramatically reduced their impact fees, anticipating that this would stimulate growth and get their economy going again. Several years after that, the University of Florida did an extensive study of the impact of reducing fees, uh, as opposed to, uh, the impact in those counties where fees were not reduced. What they found was that the recovery from two thousand and eight was not in any way related to whether or not impact fees were cut or maintained by local government. What we know instead is that Pasco County and Manatee County, which have significantly higher rates than Hillsborough County, are actually going faster than Hillsborough County is. This is not in spite of the impact fees, but because of the impact fees, because those fees allow local government to provide critical services so important to the quality of life, which is what determines where people choose to live. Raising fees will simply allow Hillsborough County to be able to better compete with our neighboring county, which are outstripping us in economic growth now. We're hampered by low fees. We're hampered by the inability to fund critical infrastructure. I urge you to reassess these fees and bring us up to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Lacor?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Noel Lacor. Um, I'm calling in today because um, impact and mobility fees must be raised. Why? Because some of those fees haven't been raised in thirty-five years. That's a long time ago. Um, I mean, I was two years old then, running around watching Fraggle Rock on a black and white television. Um, these fees should have been raised in the early two thousands, and the infrastructure should have been planned, budgeted, planned and budgeted to keep up with the residential development in these past twenty years. Now is the time to play catch-up. It's also time to stop looking at the failures of the past and start making the right decisions for the future of Hillsborough County. Impact fees should be raised between the outdated fee schedule and the fact that our infrastructure is not keeping up with the demand, causing strain and stress for most residents, especially for those in South and East Hillsborough County where a lot of the development is taking place. Um, I think it's unfortunate that some of these impact fees must be raised so high. Um, I don't usually support raising taxes or fees, but um, there's no way around this. Impact fees must be raised. Um, and slightly off topic, um, something should also be done to ensure that sufficient infrastructures are put in place before approving residential permits, because that has not been happening for a long time, and it is a huge contributing factor to the mess that we're currently in. Um, it's going to take a lot more than raising impact fees to fix our infrastructure issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, that's the last speaker we have for D one. I'm going to ask if you all don't mind that we temporarily pass D one and, uh, open up, uh, D two, uh, the public hearing on mobility fees, and that way we could discuss both of these at the end of the conclusion of the public hearing on D two. Is there any objection to that?
Commissioner Miller, I just want to be sure that you see my hand up.
Uh, Commissioner White, I do see your hand.
I I would just, I would just like to leave that hand up and and be, uh, in the queue for the discussion after we hear the public hearing on D two.
Yes, sir. No doubt. Okay. All right. Is there any objection to temporarily passing D one and move to D two?
No.
Okay. No, no objection. Mr. Merrill, D two.
Yes, this is, uh, another, uh, public hearing on mobility fees, and I think the county attorney's office is going to introduce this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Merrill. Excuse me, Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. Uh, this draft ordinance adopts an updated mobility fee study that will update study data that was adopted in twenty sixteen. It creates alternative mobility fee rate schedules for the urban and rural assessment districts to take effect uh, should the transition sales surtax cease to be levied because that, um, was a calculation in the credit component portion of the study. Uh, it provides that all new development in the rural service district, which is the rural service area, including all new development within the RP two future land use category be assessed at the rural assessment rate. Uh, this RP two distinction originates in the twenty sixteen mobility fee, mobility fee study, and the draft before you removes the provision from both the twenty twenty study and the ordinance. Um, per the consultants, is a policy decision for the board, uh, which the consultant describes in greater detail in a detail in a memo that's attached to your agenda packet. Um, this ordinance also amends the phase-in scheduled mobility fees to phase in the updated fee over a three-year period, assessing the updated fee schedule, uh, at an eighty percent assessment rate beginning September of this year, ninety percent beginning September of twenty twenty-one, and a hundred percent beginning September of twenty twenty-two. However, these percentages and dates are a policy decision that the board can modify today. Uh, it amends the periodic update of the mobility fee study from a five-year cycle to a three-year cycle. Uh, this policy decision makes it consistent with what the board's previously adopted for fire, rescue, and school impact fees. Uh, it also provides language ensuring consistency with state law. Um, to be clear, if this is adopted, it will take effect upon filing with the Department of State for any land use categories whose mobility fee is being lowered as a result of the update. However, in order to ensure consistency with state law on impact fees, any land use category whose mobility fee is higher in the updated study as compared to the twenty sixteen study will not take effect until, uh, September first of or the first stage of the phase-in, which is September first of twenty twenty in the present draft. So just to be clear, because the trip generation rates change as part of the study, there are a few land use types. Um, the examples I'll think of is daycare centers or banks with drive-throughs that are going to result for a lower fee from this update, and those will be assessed right away. Whereas per state statute, any increased fee requires at least an ninety-day notice period. Uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, staff and I, if there's any questions, as is the consultant, Neil Oliver. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing. First speaker is Eric Garduno. Garduno, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Miller, this is Terry McElroy. Eric has dropped off the line.
Okay, thank you.
Send me an update right now.
Pardon?
Uh, I have an update. There are three speakers left.
Okay, who my, who are they?
Um, one second.
Hold on, I got it. I have it here. Uh, you just, you just said it to me.
Sir.
Uh, Wendy Lekovich?
Yes, I spoke on this, uh, prior to, um, so everything that I said, um, previously, um, just a few minutes ago, um, I would reiterate.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Kent Bailey?
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for second by the apple here. Kent Bailey, uh, Chair Tampa Bay Chair Club on behalf of fourteen thousand members and supporters. I want to point out, and we've, we've heard this many times before. Opponents of updating mobility fees maintain that doing so will increase the cost of housing, which is already too high, stifle development and economic growth in Hillsborough County, and that it's just not fair. Now, I got to tell you, for nearly fifty years, I worked in residential construction, and I couldn't begin to count the time when I gave a contractor a bid or a bill that they told me I was putting them out of business. You know, they always seemed to be doing better than I was. The fact is, the price of new homes is determined by the market. It is not determined by the cost of construction. However, however, if you believe that it is, then increased impact fees will make houses more expensive. If you think that's the case, isn't it to the benefit of every single homeowner in Hillsborough County to do that? Home equity is the best part of most families' net worth, and for you of the taxpayers' homes ought to be your highest priority in this instance. So, will it kill growth in Hillsborough County to increase impact fees? The evidence absolutely says not. There's nothing we've ever been able to find that says there's any relationship for impact fees and higher growth rates. Before, Pasco and Manatee Counties have significantly higher fees, yet they're growing considerably faster than Hillsborough County. And again, the policies allow those counties to provide better services that are so critical to quality of life. That's what determines where people move, which causes life problems that suffer here in Hillsborough County. So, is it fair? Is it fair to ask the developer to pay the cost, which will actually is limited statistically to a fraction of the cost? Is it fair to increase the fee? Is it fair to ask Hillsborough taxpayers to subsidize new homes when doing so makes their own homes worth less? Is it fair for us to continue to spread this horrible traffic? Is it fair? Is it fair for any private industry to enjoy extra profit at the expense of tax? For any other reason, the Chair Club strongly supports item D two, and I thank you.
Nicole Lacor, oh, sorry, Noel Lacor. Noel Lacor?
He may have dropped off, Commissioner.
Commissioner, she has disconnected.
Okay, all right. Uh, that was the last public speaker we had on item D two. We're now moving to board discussion. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just want to say that our development fees need to be modernized. Until recently, many of these fees had sat unchanged since the nineteen eighties without even so much as being adjusted by an inflationary factor. Uh, in recognizing that our fees need to be modernized, I also acknowledge that our economic climate is unprecedented and that we have uncertain economic times ahead of us. As we recover from the COVID nineteen pandemic, I want to be sure that we don't adversely affect someone that might be on the cusp of being able to purchase a new home in the next year. Additionally, to the extent that the BOCC might be able to support, uh, construction jobs in the short term, I'm in favor of providing that local stimulus. Finally, with respect to the RP two category, it makes up such a small percentage of the county's landmass that how it's treated makes no significant difference in the grand scheme of things. Furthermore, we're not even certain where the RP two category, uh, will stand uh, after the work of our staff and planning commission staff with stakeholders. Uh, for these reasons, I believe that a slow and steady phase-in is necessary, and that the treatment of the RP two category should remain unchanged. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion with respect to the parks impact fee, and then if I may keep the floor and be recognized again for a second motion, uh, related to the mobility fees, I would greatly appreciate that. Uh, so starting.
Make your motion on D one, sir.
Okay, so.
Make your motion on D one.
D one, my motion, um, I move that we adopt the Tischler-Beis Park Impact Fee Study and approve the proposed ordinance, but with a revised phase-in schedule. I propose that we set the rate of the park impact fee at fifty-five percent of the rate schedule in the study beginning on January first, two thousand twenty-one, with a phase-in to sixty-five percent of the rate to be effective as of January first, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Well, motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman on item D one. Uh, Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I kind of had my hand raised before that, so I, uh, wasn't, I was prepared to talk, but, uh, prior to this. But, um, I would be, um, supporting the phase-in that was recommended. Um, in terms of the park mobility fees, we haven't raised them since, as you know, Commissioner White, um, nineteen eighty-five. Uh, and if we raise them to the suggested amount now, as they said, it would be thirty-five years of, um, uh, simply if we had adjusted, um, you know, what was done in the past. So I think this is a important time. It really doesn't, um, make a, um, such a distinct difference, and then we can revisit it next year. Right now, the recommended in the schedule is fifty percent of what, uh, the fees are, um, which, you know, provides us with some, uh, basic decent, um, uh, equity for taxpayers so that we can provide the parks that are needed, particularly in South and East County where the development is going on now. Uh, and this is also a resource and an investment in, uh, making sure that we have those resources, and 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 that creates jobs as well. Um, so I would, I really, uh, think the schedule is very modest as proposed and very good, and that, and we could revisit the seventy-five percent if we find ourselves in the same position next year. Uh, we might want to look at that, but I I really, um, think that the schedule proposed by staff was, um, uh, or proposed in the study and by staff was very, uh, modest and, um, and what we should move forward with.
Okay. Commissioner, uh, Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. Um, you know, we are just recently even more aware of how much people love our parks and people need parks. Our citizens told us this loud and clear when we had to close parks for a few weeks at the start of the pandemic, and the crowds exploded at our parks because the need is so great for public outdoor spaces and trails. And the minute we closed them, the outcry was huge. Um, as, uh, Commissioner White alluded to, and we all know, uh, this, these park fees have been in place since the eighties and haven't even kept pace with inflation from the, uh, rate that they were set at in those dollars. Um, so I do feel the, um, economic, uh, pressures of today, and I, you know, with, with this fee, let me tell you right here, I am, I am not for any phase-in of the mobility fees. That is a given to me. But for the parks fees, I was, uh, trying to, um, kind of get used to what the idea of swallowing the, the, uh, the schedule that the staff had proposed, that's fifty percent starting in September. Um, and it's, that's just half of what the actual cost is per house. So, you know, that leaves the cost, the other fifty percent on the taxpayers, or else we don't build the, get the parks that, um, are needed per house. So I was trying to come here with a sense of, of trying to get ready to compromise on this at, at fifty percent and then seventy-five percent in the following year. Um, it, you know, I, I can see, Commissioner White, I want to try to work with you. Um, fifty-five percent in January is, you know, might be kind of comparable to fifty percent in September. Um, but I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't think we're, we're moving fast enough if we go to sixty-five percent in January of twenty-two. Um, I think we need to move, oh, just a little bit faster, and and this is not fast, what they're proposing. So I'm, I'm really having a hard enough time getting here today. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. Um, as, as you've heard earlier, that the Parks Impact Fee was adopted in eighty-five, and we haven't had an adjustment. Uh, the proposed rates, um, do shift around due to a variety of classification changes. And as Commissioner Smith said, it's clear, our residents need and want parks, and they're a valuable asset within our community that, uh, can. and they're a valuable asset within our community that, uh, can be expanded to include lots of things that we've seen, such as sports complexes and special use facilities, which we desperately need access to for a variety of reasons, including childcare. Um, I'll note that these amenities are, we're very proud of those and we do have a Parks Plan. That Parks Plan has been limited by the resources that we've, uh, collected over the years by not acting on raising, uh, fees in line with the fair cost that it takes to develop that plan. Well, I'm, I'm, I was very much interested in considering the phase in that has been proposed by staff. Um, and we'll, and we'll move forward on actually raising the fees with a phase in of some type. But I would like to ask Commissioner White what his process was in determining the numbers that he suggested as opposed to the staff, just to get some clarification on your thought process. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for the question, Commissioner Overman. Um, so ultimately arriving at 65% in 2022, uh, quadruples the Parks Impact Fee on a, on a typical sized home as it stands. So, you know, I, I felt like that was, uh, enough certainly for now. Um, but that's, um, frankly, that's where the 65% number comes from. That would essentially take it from about 500 on a standard size home to about 2,000.
Okay. Commissioner, um, Merman, you recognize?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this question is for Commissioner White. Um, and, um, I'd like to ask, number one, um, are you, would you object to language being in here that these fees be reviewed annually, uh, given the economic crisis we're in? Um, in, I mean, everything's so uncertain. If we had another, if the pandemic came back and there was a resurgence, um, not even this year, but maybe next year. I mean, I just want to make sure that we can review these annually, uh, for appropriateness, um, to still be implemented.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, yes, sir.
Commissioner Merman, thank you for the question and yes, I would be agreeable to that. Um, you'll notice that my proposal, uh, holds the increase at zero for the rest of this year and that's because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And let me tell you, if we see a spike in the fall or we see that things aren't improving economically, I'll be first in line at the end of this year to hold a public hearing to, uh, to scale this back and, and say that we need to revisit it.
Okay, uh, would we, would you want me to do an amendment or you want to restate your motion to include that in there?
Sure, I, um, Mr. Chairman, if I, I may, um, um, uh, take the previous statement and restate it with that language?
I'm getting some feedback on you, but yeah, just want you to withdraw that motion and, and restate another motion.
Okay. Um, so, uh, I move to that we adopt the Tischler-Beis Park Impact Fee Study and approve the proposed ordinance, but with a revised phase in schedule. I propose that we set the rate of the park impact fee at 55% of the rate scheduled in the study beginning on January first, 2021, with a phase in to 65% of the rate to be effective as of January first, 2022, uh, and that these fees be reviewed annually. Annually.
Okay, and I'll second that. Yes, and I got another question. I, I'm sorry, I continue, I had another question. Um, I, I wanted to know if you considered a lot, especially, um, in some of the developments, um, the newer ones over the last years, um, that parks are being included in the development and they are being built by, you know, the builder for that, uh, particular project. Is there any provision for, I mean, any kind of a credit or, uh, that, you know, could be applied? Because, I mean, they do take a lot of burden off, uh, public dollars going into parks if they are constructing their own parks within their own development. So I just, I wondered if you had thought about that, if you would consider something like that?
I'd be open to something like that, I think, at a, at another time, um, separate from this discussion, but certainly I would welcome, uh, a conversation between stakeholders and staff on that issue.
Okay, because, um, as we get in discussion on the, uh, mobility fee, I'm going to bring, bringing up an item that, um, would relate to that, to have staff come back with a plan. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Merman, did I hear your voice?
That was, Mr. Chair, it was me, Cameron Clark, I'm sorry, I tried to do the raise hand feature. Um, just to speak real briefly, I can to, uh, Commissioner Merman's question. The impact fee ordinance does have a provision that provides for impact fee offsets for eligible contributions. Um, so if, uh, a builder or developer was to construct a park facility or dedicate land for a park facility, provided that that facility would have been eligible for impact fee expenditure, um, the, the contributing entity can receive impact fee offsets for that contribution. They have to be, um, approved, basically the county has to want the contribution first. It can't just be something that the county is required to take. Um, so the county has discretion as to whether or not it's a contribution that it would accept. But I think that, uh, just to frame the question, I know from talking to the consultants on this, uh, impact fee that a small, like say playground sized park that's just in a neighborhood is not, uh, the sort of park feature that the impact fee would be able to be expended on. Um, it's not part of the, part of the calculation because essentially the wider area does not benefit from that park. It's just really that neighborhood. So, um, I hope that answered, um, that question.
Can I just, uh, ask you, is there, are, is there a certain size of a park that would qualify for credit? Is that in the study?
I, I would defer, uh, to, uh, Mr. Ben Griffin from Tischler-Beis. The, the determining factor is really going to be, could we expend, uh, park impact fee dollars on it? And it, there's benefit zones that exist in the ordinance, um, and essentially that, that the fee payers within that benefit zone have to benefit from the, from essentially the expenditure of the fee. As to the park size itself and what was used for those numbers, the consultant could speak to that if you have any questions about it.
Okay, thank you. I, I think we'll address this later on. Thank you.
Did you want it, Mr. Commissioner Merman, did you want to hear from Mr. Griffin?
Um, if he's available and he can answer it quickly, I think that would be great.
Mr. Griffin, do you recognize?
Uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Merman. Uh, basically what we've done is, you know, in, in the study, we have separated out, uh, by a park component. And so the community park is the smallest sized park, uh, that is eligible for the impact fees. So a smaller neighborhood park would be ineligible.
Right, so is there a particular size? But I guess these builders would know what size they have, they would have to make to, uh, for it to be qualified. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would defer to, uh, how a community park is defined in the master plan.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Okay, I'll keep this brief. Um, my only hesitation about the motion is that, uh, these projects frequently will take two or three years to manifest, to get to the point where the fee is actually collected. There's a lot of planning that goes in, there's the process of getting through the development process and it takes some time. Um, having only a two-year schedule, uh, phase in may cause some confusion and make it difficult for business owners to discern how to be, uh, effective in their plan. I'm not to say that I won't support the motion, but I, I think the, the phase in of a three-year schedule with an annual review of those numbers as they are modified based on current conditions may be more valuable to our business owners in this business. Um, so I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and your consideration. Only having a two-year phase in with no certainty about where we go after that may cause more confusion than not. And it's most important in this most confusing time to give as much information as possible for our business owners to be successful. And I'll stop there.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Oh, forgot to take my hand down. Sorry.
Okay, I see no other hands. Um, let me say this, I'm going to support the motion, uh, because of the mere fact is that, as I said, when we were discussing putting a transportation tax in the ballot, we are in uncertain times and we have no idea what the outcome is going to be if and when we come out, when we come out of this pandemic, uh, situation. Uh, people are hurting right now and I, I think that one of the things we need to do is to wait until January one to see where we are. Uh, it could very well be at another spike time. Uh, that's what the healthcare professionals are saying, that we're going to have another spike. It could be at the end of the summer, it could be the beginning of the winter, we just don't know. Uh, so I think the proper thing for us to do is to hold off and wait to January. Um, one of our commissioners, uh, put that on their Facebook page that I said that and I think they've kind of put it in a negative way, but I'm still going to continue to say that. We don't know what's going to happen. So therefore we need to be, uh, looking at how we're going to come out of this pandemic and what our budget is going to look like, uh, and instead of talking about adding more burden on people, uh, that are suffering right now. So therefore I'm going to support the motion that Commissioner White made. So I have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one, Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Thank you. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my second motion is to adopt the updated Tindale-Oliver Mobility Study and approve the mobility fee ordinance, but with a revised phase in schedule to set the rates at 80% of the mobility fee rate schedule beginning in January first, 2021, followed by an increase to 90% on January first, 2022, and another increase to 100% on October first, 2022. I also propose a revision to section four zero dash seven nine subsection B of the ordinance to keep the existing language that the board adopted in 2016 that assesses certain development within the RP two land use category at the urban rate consistent with the 2016 Mobility Study. And finally, the motion would direct the consultant to amend the updated Mobility Study to include the RP two language and map that the board previously adopted in 2016 so that the ordinance and the study are consistent.
Second.
Who seconded?
Commissioner Overman.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Overman. Uh, Commissioner White, let me ask this question. Why did you tie the RP two in, into the motion?
Well, it's, um, it's, it's related. Um, it's, um, it's a part of the Mobility Fee Study and I just wanted to make, uh, an affirmative statement that, um, I believe, uh, that the area, uh, is so small geographically. Um, in the grand scheme of things, how it's treated really makes little if any difference. Um, and we also have, uh, the moratorium and, and ongoing, um, uh, look at the area, if you will. So we're uncertain as to what the RP two area will even look like at the end of that. So I just wanted to, uh, affirmatively include, uh, in the motion that I believe that we should just treat it like it's always, uh, been treated.
But, but doesn't that dilute, um, the whole concept of, of, uh, implementing raising mobility fees? Uh, if you put RP two in an urban setting?
Uh, again, I don't believe so because we're experiencing so much growth, uh, in development in South Hillsborough County, much of which has been outside of the RP two area. Um, and I don't know if Tom Fessler is, uh, is on the meeting, if he could speak to that. But my understanding is that it makes very little difference, uh, in the, uh, in the financial figures.
Well, you, you might have my vote if you remove that from that motion. Let's hear from Mr. Fessler. Mr. Fessler, can you comment on that?
Uh, yes, uh, Commissioner, um, I would have to, um, I guess research that information. I don't have, I do not have that readily available.
Okay.
I can, we can, we can take a look at it and try to get back to you later today if we have a little bit of time.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Um, I, I, uh, appreciate the phasing in. I can totally support the phasing in. I also see no reason to continue the RP two exception. It is 11,000 acres that would get urban rates when actually it needs more infrastructure than any place and it would really, um, dilute the whole plan. It's extremely important to me. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion, um, if, if that's.
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion, I'm sorry, uh, amendment, substitute motion to accept the phasing in, but to remove the RP two exception.
Is there a second to, to the, uh, substitute motion? Is there a second? Dies for lack of a second. Um, Commissioner White? Um, you know, I, I totally agree with the phasing aspect of what you're doing. But I would hate to see your, your good motion go down because of the RP two segment that you put in there. Uh, with that, with that in there, I can't vote for it. If you would just take that out of your motion and then bring it back, if you want to bring it back in a separate motion, do it that way. Uh, but.
Let me, let me, let me do that, Mr. Chairman. Let me withdraw my motion and I'll, I'll make, uh, I'll make a, uh, another motion and then I'd like to be recognized again for, for subsequent motion.
No problem, no problem.
Okay, so, um, so my first motion, uh, would be to adopt the updated Tindale-Oliver Mobility Study and approve the Mobility Fee Ordinance, but with a revised phase in schedule to set the rates at 80% of the Mobility Fee Rate Schedule beginning on January first, 2021, followed by an increase to 90% on January first, 2022, and another increase to 100% on October first, 2022.
I'll second that, Commissioner Overman.
Have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, I, I think, and I appreciate, um, the work that everybody's done on this. I think there's been many, I mean, I went back through all the, uh, workshops and everything. I mean, there's, staff has done a young man's job to try and answer our questions the best way possible. But that was before the pandemic and I think we're on very unusual and challenging times right now. Um, and normally I would say that don't warrant any increase of fees. I really, I, I tell you, after going this, um, through all this, I just think that people are hurting. They need our county government now more than ever. And quite frankly, I mean, I'm, I'm most likely going to support the motion, but this is a severe distraction in the midst of what we're trying to do. And I do think it's very important, I was glad to see in Commissioner White's motion that he attempted to strike a balance, um, to help, uh, answer some of the concerns about the pandemic. I think everybody needs to realize some of the facts here that hu- a home building and construction is 20% of our local economy. And, and those of us, Hagan and Miller and I, who went through the recession on this commission, um, they are the ones that bailed us out at the ends. And we may very well be in that position again, going into, um, after we find out what the effects, the economic effects of this COVID-19 has had for us. Um, they have supported, you know, we did raise fees in 2016. Um, we, we have raised fees for water and school. Um, we actually in 2017, we did double the trend, the, the fees. Um, that's before Commissioner Smith and Overman were here. Um, in February, we increased, uh, the school impact fees, 125%. We're now requiring, right now, the fees on buying a new home are around $13,000. So here we are in an economic crisis, and we're discussing doubling fees for all these different things, which could total the amount of $26,000 in fees going on to a new home. And actually, this is passed on to the home buyer, and it does equate to about a 6.7% increase in the house price for a $240,000 home. And this is during uncertain times. And we all know the county's infrastructure, their dollars are going to diminish over the next two years, and its effect on our budget is going to be, we know is going to be significant. Three of us sat through this for six years. So the fees do get passed on to buyers, and it will impact our customer confidence, because this is a part of our community. The home building community is, you know, I remember Lucia gave us a graph one time, Lucia, Ms. Garcia's, jobs, people, growth. And that is really how you have to look at it. But, you know, if there's a 6.7% increase in the price of a home, that means that 24% are going to get priced out at $150,000 to $200,000 home. 72% are getting priced out at $149,000 or less. This widens the gap on affordable housing, and that's a fact. And when prices go up, the opportunity to buy goes down. And so I think that I don't want to see our efforts in affordable housing go down the drain. I mean, that is just, I mean, we've worked too hard, we've gotten so far to get there. And then all the facts we don't even know, today, is the health crisis over? Will the COVID return? What does our unemployment look like? We have 100,000 unemployed in Hillsborough County right now. Right now, 15% unemployment. And will people work from home, stay in place? A lot of businesses are saying, this is very efficient, it'll save me money. I think that's definitely going to affect our congestion problem in transportation going forward. How will we spend the new fees? If we do, I haven't seen a list. I don't know why we're raising the fees without a list of what we're going to spend the money on. I still haven't seen what we spent the money on in 2016. In transit, in this crisis, stark reality is that buses are dirty, and all the, the aquarium sent out a cert, and well, a lot, perception is that buses have, because different people travel on the buses, and buses are not clean.
Let me hold up, let me reassure you that our buses are not dirty. They clean those buses every day, all day, so that's not true.
But people are going to be concerned about getting on a bus with other people, and the aquarium just put out a survey of individuals that have gone to the aquarium that said 93% of the people say sanitation is a top priority. We want to know if the office markets, if restaurants, small business, or all these businesses, are they going to be able to survive? I mean, there is so much uncertainty with jobs, housing, healthcare. This is really not the right time to raise any fee. You know, I like the phase-in approach right now, as long as there's an annual review component in there, so at least we can take a look at it before it goes into effect. But I think, you know, we have to consider this before we vote. We're experiencing the largest economic downturn since the Great Depression. Our citizens are still at home, at least in 165 and over. Our businesses are operating at limited capacity, 50% or at best. Many of the businesses will not survive this crisis. Our government agencies are struggling to find means to support all of the current elements of our economy. Businesses cannot survive without our help. We got 256 million in CARES Act dollars to help our business community and have an economic stimulus package. We're going to stimulate our economy, yeah, we're going to negate that with any increase in fees. You know, it says, you know, our unemployment is still going to be large. And so I guess it's just one last consideration is that millions of dollars, like our CARES Act dollars, are being spent to enable companies to remain solvent. It just doesn't really make sense to increase fees. I do, I am very mindful of the issues in South County, because I've been there. I mean, it's part of my district. And I do, but we can't today enact a fee for the sins of the past. I mean, that just, and we've got to know what we're paying for. And I hope, Commissioner White, in your motion, that you will, you know, have the annual review to assess this impact from the impact fee, and also ask for a new study next year that will help give present, take into consideration present economic conditions and capture changes in the future needs. And I think that there's just a new normal that's going to be out there, and I think everything's going to change. And I don't want to see our affordable housing industry be devastated by any changes we make today. And all these economist reports I look at, they are, they say it will affect affordable housing. And so it's just, to me, it's not a question of whether our county is going to feel any additional economic pain from this pandemic, because we are going to. It's just a question of how much and when. And I think there's too many questions that are unanswered right now, and we have to really be very, very careful and cautious about how we move forward. And thank you very much for letting me make those comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. We've heard a lot today about what raising fees, and what I'm going to suggest is that the study that we've paid a lot of money for has brought to us the realities of what it costs for us to address the infrastructure, mobility, and otherwise, to provide services to our citizens. While I agree that it makes sense at this time, because we have so many things that are uncertain, to phase those numbers in and to give our business owners that are in the business of building homes and building communities, some time to adjust to the reality of the cost that we must pay to build the infrastructure to support these communities. I think it's also important to recognize that we've heard study after study and economic report, that Hillsborough County needs affordable housing. The folks that are not impacted in a great way by COVID-19 and what's happening in our economy will still be able to buy homes. So those homes that are in the queue will actually get built, and those homes that are out there that pay the fees will absorb the cost in one way, shape, or form. But I think what's important to recognize is, one of the tools that we have to help bring affordable homes to our community is the ability to address these fees and to waive them appropriately without actually impacting our budget as a way of creating the jobs. The people that build these homes don't care whether they're an affordable home or not affordable home, and whether or not the impact fee is paid or not. They're in the business of having the job to build a house, or to build a multifamily home that is close to transit, so that our workers can be close to and have a way of saving themselves the ability to own two cars in order to be able to provide for their family. Investing in our future and our infrastructure will create jobs. Helping our building and development industry build in areas that we've actually, in all of our workshops, indicated that we need to stimulate the economy and build smartly by investing in affordable homes, affordable housing, and in our infrastructure. So I will support the motion in order to give our business owners and our development industry the opportunity, but also recognize, we do have mobility plans, we have tips that we approve, we have more plans in the works for creating transportation than we've ever had, given we've analyzed the numbers almost to death. And so to say that we don't have plans, and we don't know how we're going to spend the money, or that we haven't spent the money, when we look at what we've spent on transportation over the last four or five years, it's been significant, but to the deficit of other resources that we have not been able to pay for, because we haven't charged the fair rate for what it costs to invest in our mobility and our other infrastructure. So I'll support the motion today. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I'm surprised you didn't let me go a little longer. I'm just kidding. The traffic congestion is a huge problem in our county, and the builders themselves are saying congestion is a huge problem that must be addressed. But their builders are arguing that the problem is not that they need to pay more, but that we need to put more of our taxpayer dollars towards transportation, infrastructure, and that's the thing. It costs what it costs, and somebody has to pay. Either the developer pays, or the taxpayers pay, or else nobody pays, and then more development gets built without sufficient funding for transportation, and traffic just gets worse and worse. And that's what's been happening for decades, and that's how we got into this mess. We now have solid, independent studies showing exactly what each new house costs us in the infrastructure needed to serve that house, from roads and parks to schools and water and sewer. And it turns out that because our fees have been far too low for far too lo, long, we have been losing $13,000 a house that they've been building without paying their own way. Most of us commissioners campaigned on the promise that we would fix this problem and make development pay its fair share of its own costs. And I made that promise, and I intend to do all I can to keep that promise. There's always an excuse made for phasing in. The current fee said in 2016 was phased in, and we were only getting 80% of the costs last year, the cost figured in 2016. We were only getting 80% of that last year, when a building was booming and the economy was great, because there's always this push to phase in costs and leave more of the burden on the taxpayer and make the taxpayer subsidize this one industry. If we only charge developers 80% of their costs, then the taxpayers are stuck with 20% of the cost. Now they say the timing is not right for them to pay their full costs. And remember, the cost is in NPF fees, is only the capital costs. The taxpayers take on the maintenance and operation and everything else from then on, and they've got plenty of discounts in there. But they're saying the timing is right, not right for them to pay. And I say the timing's not right for the taxpayers to continue subsidizing these costs. Our tax income base will be shrinking, and we will need, in this economy, to be spending more of our tax dollars on social services and affordable housing and helping every business, not just this one business with a lot of lobbyists. We need to help everybody, the restaurants, the hair salons, the, all the small businesses that are suffering. It's just not fair to make those taxpayers pay to subsidize this one industry that happens to have the biggest lobbyists. So, you know, I would, I would not, I don't want to have to phase this in. I can see that the will of the board today is only to get to a phased-in level, and I will count that a step in the right direction, if that's where we get to today. But in trying to get to a phase-in, I would like to get back to Commissioner White's motion and how that compares, but, oh, yeah, all right, we've got the RP2 out of it, okay. Because, Commissioner White, I want to get clear on how your motion compares to the phase-in that we're being offered, because I think the phase-in that was in the item before us was, it was a lot for me to get to as it stood. You know, I tried to get there with the parks, and I did, okay? But mobility fees is so important, and so the plan in front of us, that the staff has recommended with this study, says that the first year, this mobility fee will only increase $827. I mean, the full increase needs to be $2,300 in the house for a regular, and of course, it's different for different kinds of building, but for residential standard house, the impact fee full, 100% would be $2,300. Okay? What staff has suggested is year one, it would raise 827, and that would start in September, okay, get us through the summer, and start in September, 827. And then year two, it would raise another 740, two years from now. And year three, another 740 on top of that, finally, just adding 2,300 a house for this dire need that we have, particularly as they build houses in South County. So I'd like to just ask you, what is the difference in your phase-in schedule from this? And why, why this isn't satisfactory for you? Because this is, this is a pretty far bridge for me to come. So what is it that, that you're asking beyond this, please?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. When I proposed this schedule and vetted it with staff and everyone as I was preparing this motion, I was looking solely at the COVID-19 pandemic. So my thought process was that I didn't want to see any increase in the fee at all for calendar year 2020, which is, you know, what led me to a place of the phase-in beginning January 1 of 2021, and then, you know, pretty aggressively being implemented throughout 2022, when I think most economists believe that we'll be well out of the woods at that point. So my thought process, Commissioner Smith, was really just solely with what's going on with the economy with COVID-19, and the most important piece of it is that I just wanted to hold increases at zero for the rest of this calendar year.
If I could follow up, what is the, what is the dollar amount then? Or what was the percentage then, instead of 80% and 90%? Can you, can you just go through what your motion is?
Yeah, so if my motion passes, the fee would be phased in at 80% beginning January 1, 2021. It would go to 90% January 1, 2022, and it would go to 100% October 1, 2022. So by the end of 2022, it would be fully implemented.
Okay, all right, thanks, I got it. It's pretty much the same as what we have, but the dates are shifted, right?
Yeah, it just holds everything at zero for the rest of this calendar year, because I think the remainder of this calendar year is going to be pretty tough, and, you know, if someone's on the cusp of being able to afford that new home, and that bit of an increase could make a difference, you know, I just feel like we could do our part to, to offer that stimulus and offer the stimulus, again, for some of those potential construction jobs that we might see.
Thank you. With that, I'll support it.
Okay.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I appreciate all the discussion. It's been very, very good, and I think really helps educate everyone about this. I'll just take a second, and I think it was done actually by Commissioner Smith inadvertently just now, but I'd just like to debunk the language that keeps coming out about how we're doubling any kind of fees, even when we fully do what is here today. There is no way... It's been very, very good, and I think really helps educate everyone about, about this. I'll just take a second, and I think it was done actually by Commissioner Smith inadvertently just now, but I'd just like to debunk the language that keeps coming out about how we're doubling any kind of fees, even when we fully do what is here today. There is no way that it's anywhere near doubling any of these mobility fees, which is typically the biggest fee that you face. So I'd like to just, I mean, as you said, it was, you know, a $700 or $800 increase in the first year, you know, this is no, this is nowhere near doubling any kind of fees. So I want to, you know, end that discussion or at least put that point out. I also want to say that as many of, as this board, and I know the public, and I've had people comment or ask, and they have concerns about affordable housing. And I think there is a huge amount of sharing concern on that throughout the community. But there is an easy fix for that. The legislature made it available to us last year to waive our, our impact fees for affordable housing with good categories. And that increase could take effect immediately if we were to do that. There's no, the 90-day hold isn't if we lower fees. So after we just talk about this, I'd like to make a motion, Commissioner Miller, with regards to having staff bring back such a, a plan.
Okay, I'll get back to you. Members, we have beat this horse to death, resurrected it, and beaten it to death again. I think we all know how we're going to vote. So let's play this for a landing. Commissioner Merman, you recognize with brief comment?
I'm sorry, I didn't put my hand down. But I do want to ask Commissioner White, are you, will you put that annual review in your motion like you did on the parks?
Commissioner Merman, I can either do that or have you put an amendment on the floor, whichever you prefer, because I've already divided the motion and have to be recognized again for another motion. However you prefer.
I'll do an amendment that this has, the rate increase will be reviewed annually going forward.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White. I see no hands at this point, so call the roll on the amendment.
Miller?
Hello? Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
We're now on the motion that was amended, the motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Overman. See no further discussion. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For my final motion, I move to revise Section 40-79, subsection B of the ordinance to keep the existing language that the board adopted in 2016 that assesses certain development within the RP2 land use category at the urban rate, consistent with the 2016 mobility study. Additionally, I would include in this to direct the consultant to amend the updated mobility study to include the RP2 language and map that the board previously adopted in 2016, so that the ordinance and the study are consistent.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Smith, you recognize with a brief comment?
Yeah, I will not be supporting this. This is a policy decision about how we get development paying its fair share of infrastructure in an area that is outside the urban service area boundary. That means it doesn't get urban services, and it's semi-rural in any way you slice it to, to be giving it the benefit of the lower urban impact fees for transportation is just contrary to everything that I've been working for and, and some of us have been working for to try to do smart growth and where we do have development to make it pay its fair share. The costs are greater outside the urban service area, the farther you go. Making the costs lower by lowering impact fees out there just encourages sprawl beyond the urban service area and puts more of that burden on the taxpayers. So big area, small area, Commissioner White, I heard you, but it's a policy decision that I cannot support. Thank you.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner White earlier said that the difference in revenue of this change is negligible. The question that I have for staff, I'm not sure who, who would answer this, but how many landowners are impacted by this change? Because I remember staff, and again, I don't recall who it was, but telling me many, many months ago that primarily or almost entirely, this change would only affect one or two landowners or companies. Can, can someone refresh my memory or tell me if that's accurate?
This is Mike. I think it's, it's, but Lucia, are you on the phone or Adam?
I am. I'm just checking with Adam on, I think we're somewhere in the two to three range, but I can't, I'd like Adam to verify that number, Commissioner. And I just texted him to do so.
Mr. Gromley?
Yes, Commissioners, I believe there are, there are several landowners that are, that are in the RP2 future land use category. But there are a limited number of, of larger developments. We'd have to take a little bit to identify the actual number of owners, but is, but is, there's a small number of owners that are in the RP2 that, that are yet to develop.
Okay, so as far, as far as the individuals that own large tracts, again, I was told it was maybe only one, but one or two or three. I mean, can you better define that or?
Two, three is in the right neighborhood. I can, I can do a quick check to check out the large spots, but I'm aware that there is a limited number of, of, of large landowners within the RP2 area that have well-traveled tracts.
Okay, thank you. Board members, it's quite clear to me that the...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going to say it again.
Okay, it's, it's crystal clear to me that these two or three landowners are being targeted, if not intentionally. That argument can be made, and I would not be surprised to see that as a basis for legal action against the county. Voting against this motion, I believe, is, is wrong. These folks are being, being targeted, and it's going to negatively impact them for two or three people that the revenue, we've already been told, is negligible. So I'm strongly going to support the motion, and I would encourage you to do so as well.
Okay, I see no further comments. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Merman. Please call the roll.
Miller?
No.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
No.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion failed three to four. Commissioners Miller, Kemp, Overman, and Smith voted no.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. At this time, I wanted to make a motion to direct staff. As I said before, the state legislature last year gave us an opportunity in statute to waive fees for affordable housing, but for water and wastewater. I'd like to direct staff to come back with options to consider for affordable housing incentives in the mobility fee program, consistent with state law.
The motion by Commissioner Kemp, is there a second?
Second. Commissioner Smith?
Commissioner Smith, second to the motion. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I believe that is already on our project list. I had asked for a report to take a look at impact fees and its impact on our affordable housing strategies. Let me look for sure.
Charlene, are you on the phone? Can you check the future issues list?
Yeah, I believe it was scheduled, it's item number 2177, that was assigned on March 3 with a delivery date of June 17. So I appreciate the, the request, but I believe we already have it on the agenda.
It's already in place.
But thank you.
Yes, that's, that's correct. 21, 20177, yes.
So Commissioner Kemp, your, your motion is already in place.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Commissioner Hagan?
Forgot to take his hand down.
I'm sorry, I forgot to take it down.
Commissioner, that's it. Mr. Clark, your hand's up?
Mr. Chair, yes, very quickly, I'll be very brief. I was taking notes on each of the amendments as they were passing, but I just wanted to clarify, was there a final vote yet on the ordinance as amended to those changes? I just wanted to make sure. So the final vote was to adopt the ordinance with those changes.
Yes, and it was six to one with Commissioner Hagan voting no.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Merrill?
Yep.
You recognize?
Yes, we're ready for 11:00 AM time, certain, which is E1, presentation by Dr. Eisenberg.
Yeah, Dr. Eisenberg from the University of South Florida, Dr. Peterson from the University of South Florida, and Ms. Luanne Lopez, I don't know where she's from.
University of South Florida as well.
Hello, Dr. Eisenberg, how you doing?
I'm doing wonderfully. Thank you, Chair Miller, thank you, county commissioners, and thank you, Mr. Merrill. I'm very pleased to be back with you again this morning. Last time I spoke with the commission, I explained that open and continuous communication with the public was key to successful emergency response. And if you recall, I believe this was a few weeks ago, we spoke about reopening as turning a dial as opposed to flipping a switch, and that we should turn the dial slowly depending on data and community response. And after we, we last spoke, Leanna Lopez and I and her team started doing some survey work to be sure that we could capture data on the community response and how they were responding to reopening. Today, I'm back with you at Mr. Merrill's request, along with Dean Peterson, who is Dean of the College of Public Health at the University of South Florida, as well as Leanna, to talk about next steps for broadening efforts to get public input and promote community dialogue around reopening. Obviously, this is a hot topic around the country, probably around the world. The reason I'm bringing it to you today is we want to get your feedback about our approach and get any questions as we move to broaden our attempts to get input from the public. The key thing to understand upfront is that successfully managing any public health emergency requires two kinds of data. The first is epidemiological data, which is testing, tracing, counting cases, mortality rates, which have been provided very well to the EPG by Dr. Holt and Mr. Dudley and others. But the other kind of data that's so important that I know you all deal with, with your constituents, is behavioral data. What are people reporting that they think, feel, and are doing relative to reopening? I'm going to ask Dean Peterson, before I share my screen, to talk just a little bit about the importance of communication and community engagement in responding to our current pandemic situation. Donna?
Thank you, Dean Eisenberg, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Welcome, Dean.
So thank you, and I, I just want to take a moment, and I, this is, this is a very important conversation. And as we know, the COVID-19 pandemic is a public health crisis. It's been described that way. It's a public health emergency. You've all been responding in that, in that way. But I just wanted to share a little bit to put, put it in its broader context. Public health is what we do collectively as societies to create conditions in which we all can be healthy. And when I, and I've been teaching public health for many, many years, I've been a public health professional for more years than that even, I, I try to help my students understand that it's called public health, to my memory. One, because it's about the public, it's about the entire population, and this experience has clearly shown how a disease can affect the entire population. Your deliberations over the past two months have made that abundantly clear. This has affected every single person in this county and the state and all around the country. But the other reason that I think it's called public health is because the public owns it. When I say public health is what we do collectively as societies, it's because only the public can decide, to Eric's point, what it is willing to do or have done to it, what it is willing to accept in the way of, of restrictions or allowances. Only the public can behave in ways that will protect health. So you all know, there's policy directors that are important, there are guidelines that are important, but if the public won't behave in ways to protect their collective health, then we will not be able to protect their collective health. So these communication efforts and strategies that are designed to fully engage the community in discussions about their own health are critically important, particularly at this time. And I'm really pleased that this county sees fit to enlist experts like Dean Eisenberg and his colleagues in this kind of work, because we are all in this together. It affects all of us, and we will only get out of it if we seek to understand and listen and appreciate and then move forward in ways that people can come together and get us through this crisis. So with that, I appreciate the time to share a few comments, and I'll turn it back over to my colleague Dean Eisenberg. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dean Peterson. And if you don't mind, Chair Miller, I just want to go through a couple slides of what our approach will be to continue our work in this area. And then I would very much like to get feedback from all of the commissioners about any comments or questions that they might have. This is a little bit redundant with what Dean Peterson just, sir, sir? Is that okay?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. This is a little redundant, but just very, very quickly, there's been, there have been a number of national reports about how to respond to an emergency like this, and they all emphasize communication, two-way dialogue, specifically when we get community input, especially systematic input based upon data and surveys and statistical validity and things like that. It provides important input to you guys, to the ADC, to chambers of commerce, based upon the kinds of things that people are doing and saying. The other thing that's very important is that when citizens have input, they're more likely to support the decisions that you make. Citizen feedback very much guides Leanna's efforts to communicate on behalf of the county. And then this last bullet is one that I think we're all trying to move towards some sense of common ground. If we can have respectful dialogue across different perspectives, and we can show parties that we, all parties that we're committed to both a healthy economy and healthy people, these things do not have to be oppositional. Americans are very good at turning difference into opposition, but these things don't have to be in conflict so long as we reopen carefully. Neither families nor businesses want to see an escalation in cases. I think that's a true fact. So what are we going to do? So we, we would like to continue to expand our outreach to the community to get public input. And fortunately, the county some time ago purchased a public input platform that they've been using very, very successfully to gauge public sentiment. It's also a platform that's used all around the country, particularly in cities like Seattle and Raleigh. And the most recent outreach that we did reached, had 12,000 responses to it. What we plan to do over the next few weeks and months is use that platform to conduct a combination of surveys, town halls, social polling, to get citizens' perspectives on things like, what do you know about COVID-19? What do you think about the phased reopening? How do you feel about screening and testing, your comfort level with it? What are you willing to do? What's your intention to take personal safety precautions? What's your comfort level in going out to businesses? I'm sure that that's a conversation in each of your... I'm sure that that's a conversation in each of your homes. I was talking about it with my wife this morning about, do you go get your haircut? Don't you get your haircut? Do you go to the dentist? Those kinds of things. In speaking with Leanna and her team, we're thinking about sorting the data collection into three groups, specifically speaking with business owners, with residents, and with employees. There are slightly different questions, and people can have multiple roles, that they would respond in multiple capacities. As we go forward with feeding people back their responses and getting this data out there, we also want to take whatever opportunity we can to share the latest factual information as we develop a good county dashboard, so that people are developing opinions based upon facts and data and not based on rumor and things like that. So that's the plan, to reach out, to get more information, to give a rich data set, not just around testing and cases, but also around attitudes, perceptions, and intentions around behavior. So questions or comments from the commission would be much welcome. We would like to know, you know, are these the right groups? Would you like to add other kinds of groups, other kinds of data, and any other comments that you might have about our approach? Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Lopez, is there anything you wanted to say?
No, clearly, I think Dr. Eisenberg covered it. Our goal would be, with the initial survey, all residents would be able to take it, and then at the end, there's a question to take additional questions based on your, for an employer or a business owner, or if you're an employee. And if you're neither, you can just hit none and exit the survey.
Okay. Are you a USF grad?
I am a USF grad.
The University of South Florida, Ms. Lopez, okay.
Yes, the University of South Florida.
Go both. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. I really appreciate you bringing this forward and recognizing the value of the dialogue with our community. As a behavioral finance person, and watching the stock market move and ebb and flow based on facts, rumors, and I think most importantly, on people's emotions, you know, the ultimate fear-greed relationship is well-known in the behavioral finance area. And more information out there that people can use that's factual will assist them in making decisions to play an active role on addressing how we as a community rebuild our economy, get back to work, provide a safe place for our children, and actually really support efforts to minimize the risk of community spread. We've heard on numerous occasions today, various different issues that are impacted by what we're experiencing through this pandemic. Taking a forward action role and communicating, as Dr. Eisenberg mentioned, the facts, recognizing that public health is critically in all of our jobs to do, will help us get our economy back on track. By allowing rumors and misinformation, or the lack of information on how people can play a part in bringing our economy back on track, on keeping ourselves safe in our homes, in our businesses, and in the economy, is a critical part of the success. We keep hearing that we're going to have another phase, and, you know, another spike. And if that occurs, it's going to hurt us all. It's going to hurt not only those that lose their lives, but it's going to help those businesses that have taken the risk to try and reopen and to follow guidelines that are the best that they can find to help them be successful in not only running their businesses, taking care of their employees, but also taking care of their families. So I think this is a really critical move, and I move approval for moving forward on this effort. Thank you.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Overman, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Merman. Is there any further discussion? Let me thank Dean Eisenberg, Dean Peterson, and Ms. Lopez for all the work putting this together. I thank Commissioner, I don't think, I know Commissioner Overman hit it right on the head. We have got to be moving in the most logical way we possibly can. And I've talked constantly here from Dean Peterson, as we have those EPG calls, and then Dr. Eisenberg, about where we're going. We're anticipating there will be a spike again, and we don't know what's going to happen at that point. We just have no idea. Some people saying it's going to be worse than the first one we had. I see Dr. Peterson shaking her head, yeah. I hear that all the time, so we've just got to be prepared. So let me thank the three of you for what you've done on that. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And if I could ask a question of Dean Peterson, and then comment on what we're talking about, asking our public questions and giving them factual materials. Dean Peterson, can you comment a little bit on the efficacy of masks? Because there's a lot of confusion in the public. There's misinformation, there's a lot of questions about whether we should all be wearing masks, or do masks cause disease, or do they cause brain damage? I mean, there's just a whole gamut of stuff out there. Can you please inform us here?
Commissioner Smith, Chair, may I respond?
Yes.
So, it's a great question. In cases like this, there's always a lot of, where there's not certainty, then there's uncertainty, and uncertainty breeds all kinds of theories. If you think about how this virus is transmitted, it's transmitted through exhalated droplets, so coughing, heavy breathing, if you're in an enclosed space, even if no one's coughing, if someone is asymptomatic, breathing, if you're in that enclosed space, you're longer your time transmission. So the reason for a face mask, in addition to the distancing that we have recommended from the very beginning, the reason for a face mask is primarily to protect others around you from your exhaled breath droplets cough. It also, though, because it's covering your face, it can also protect you if someone is breathing, if you're in an enclosed space, or someone coughs near you, or you're exposed for a longer time. So the distancing is critical, but we know it's very challenging to maintain social distancing, or the physical distancing, as some of us like to call it, of six feet. That's just not always possible. So as a next line of defense, having a covering over your mouth and nose is one more way to prevent transmission of the virus. It will reduce transmission of the virus from person to person when you can't maintain the distancing required. And it doesn't have to be a surgical mask or an N95 mask. Those are reserved for our healthcare providers and first responders, those who we need to protect because we need them to protect us. Any kind of face covering will do. There's some evidence out there that suggests certain materials are more protected than others, but at the end of the day, we're urging people to maintain the physical distancing, and when they think that's going to be a challenge, which is pretty much anytime we're in public interacting with other people, it's in everyone's best interest for us to cover our faces. Period.
Thank you. And so, just a couple of comments. I mean, we, if what we know is that, A, nobody's, we're not going to get everybody 100% compliance, but the more people are wearing masks and social distancing and hand washing, the fewer people will be sick. And the better off our community will be, the better off our economy will be. So as we consider communicating with people, what I would like to hear from, I think what would be helpful to hear from them is, what are their attitudes about these policies? How do they feel about masks? How do they feel about, and what is their, somehow get at, what is their misinformation? What are their fears about wearing masks? What is their lived experience in the difficulties of social distancing? And, you know, what are they missing? So that then in the next round of communication, we can really address that and target those fears, the misinformation that we're getting from them. So, I mean, that to me would be very important to be asking as we go out, what they know, how much they know, what is the misinformation they have, and what is their lived experience about this? And then, while we're at it, though, I mean, it's so expensive to communicate with our citizens, whether it's advertising, or mailers in their water bills, or however we do this, it seems like we should be taking that opportunity to provide factual materials. I see that as one of your questions, and I would be suggesting that we do use every opportunity to provide the factual information that we, as we understand it. And then finally, I would just suggest to all of us, as community leaders, as county commissioners, as well as county employees, that we make a special effort to model the best practices in our own behavior in the community as visible leaders of the community, that we are wearing masks, that we are social distancing to begin making it, to normalize it, and to provide that example. Thank you, that's my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Okay, this will be very quick, and just to play off your comments and Ms. Lopez. Communication, I think after going through this whole pandemic, communication is the most important thing, and I never realized how much our citizens rely on government. And our role as officials is probably the most important when we have hurricanes, when we have pandemics, when we have things, because we, they need information. People want information. Otherwise, they're going to turn on the news and listen to what they say. They need to hear it from us. And I just want to make sure that whatever we say, whatever we do, that we keep this as an ongoing effort, that we don't just stop because our numbers have dropped so dramatically low that we feel like we're out of the woods, that we keep something going as far as safety for our citizens under that category, especially our older citizens, people that are health compromised, disabled, our vulnerable populations. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no hands up at this point in time. Let me again, let me again thank Dean Eisenberg, Dean Peterson, and Ms. Lopez for your presentation. We truly appreciate it, and we'll probably be seeing you again pretty soon. We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Merman to accept the presentation, F1. See no further discussion, please call the row.
Chair?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, and I have one more comment after the vote.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yeah, I just didn't want to miss the opportunity just to thank Leanna Lopez. I think, coming from communications myself, I recognize what an incredible job that department, our communications department, has been doing through this pandemic to get the word out to people. I'm amazed, time and time again, that you are working around the clock to get something out really quickly and get, move it out on all channels and communicate clearly. And I just want to take this little moment to give that appreciation to you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I pass that appreciation on to my team. It's totally a team effort. I appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, thank you for doing that, but you all have no idea, no idea what Ms. Lopez and her team have been doing. You may see some of it outside where she's put, but the work that she's been doing specifically with the EPG and getting messages out and communicating with the public, you have no idea. It's astronomical. So I talk to her about it just about every day, sometimes two or three times a day. So again, you're right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Merrill?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just want to make sure we correct the record. When you called for the vote on this last item, you had said F1, it's actually E1. So I just want to make sure the record's clear.
Yeah, you know, yeah, E1.
I know, we're all like tired here. Okay, so that takes us to item F3, which is Commissioner Merman's item.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you so much. This is very simple. Hillsborough County, our Judicial Circuit 13 receives well below the state average in funding per child on child welfare services. I mean, this has been historical. And last year, our commission authored a letter to the Hillsborough delegation regarding this funding disparity, and we urge equitable funding for Hillsborough County. As a result of our efforts and the efforts of many of the child and family advocates within the Hillsborough community, the legislature did set aside 4.3 million in new funding for case management pilot project to improve our community's ability to meet the needs of children and family under our care. And just a side note, our case managers, the ratio of child to case managers is still too high, and that's why the funding for this pilot's so important. The current pandemic has had a serious impact on our state's financial resources. The governor will be making a lot of very important decisions on what items in the budget that he wants to keep and which ones will be eliminated. And Chris Carr from Eckerd Connects has requested us to send this letter of support for these case management funds to the governor from the county commission. And the governor needs to ensure that our local community supports this funding and wants it to remain intact. This commission has made a significant investment in keeping children out of the child welfare system. It is working, and with these additional funds, we can have a similar effort in getting children out of the child welfare system safely. And I will say, I would like the letter. So my motion will be to send this letter to the governor to, well, it's actually in the motion, that direct the letter from our commissioners be sent to Governor DeSantis' office in support of Senate Bill 1326, that was passed containing language directing the Department of Children and Families to establish a pilot project in Judicial Circuit 6, Nelson and Pasco Counties, and Judicial Circuit 13, Hillsborough County. The pilot project is to improve child welfare services, and the critical funding implements the pilot project. I would like to add that this letter also go to the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House and to the members of our legislative delegation.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Merman, the second by Commissioner Overman and Kemp. And Kemp, see no further discussion, please call the row.
Chair?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill?
Yes, next item, F4, Commissioner Overman's item.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Yes, yeah, I'm right here, thank you, sorry about that. As we continue to reopen the economy, it's become readily apparent that the childcare industry, and those provide childcare, are the backbone of our workforce. We've heard that from Commissioner Merman at the EPG Board, that the Early Learning Coalition and the Children's Board are working to ensure the resources for our children. But as is, I just truly believe that our childcare providers and child-related programs this summer are wrestling with a variety of different pieces of guidance that they are getting on how to open safely. There's multiple sources, some from the CDC, some from Children and Family Services, some from the state, some from our own licensing board. And I'm glad to see that the item and the consent was A7 that permits the waiver
Clear, concise language on the guidelines will give owners of the closed establishments and those that are in the process of reopening a clear understanding of what they need to do. The reality is numerous executive orders across the state level have created some confusion, and our, our governor has been very specific on, in his order, on how to move, how our childcare providers and childcare, well, child, child providers are to operate. But it's, getting all this different information from a variety of different sources within Hillsborough County is not helping our businesses that provide, that are in the business of keeping their kids safe while parents are able to go to work, I think is an important focus of this, of this item. I also believe that we were benefactors of the CARES Act that provides funding for businesses, facilities, and other organizations that need to make either capital investment or operational support to help them be able to address with the impact of COVID-19. That may include, you know, renovations, it may include accommodations, it includes PPE and sanitation. A lot of these businesses have been closed for four weeks and are now looking, because they have historically provided after-school program or summer programs, are looking for ways that they can open safely. So I think it's important for us to have a plan for those organizations that provide child support so that our workers can go back to work and they know that their children are in a safe place, that we build that plan and, and welcome any solutions that our staff can provide. So I do have a motion, but I'd like to open this up in the event there's comments on that issue.
I see the, Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Actually, I just want to add to your motion. So, yeah, because I appreciate everything that you're doing. So if you would go ahead and make it, then I'll just want to make sure that this is going to be included.
Commissioner Overman, you want to make your motion?
Sure. So I move that the county attorney's office, children's services, communications, and any other pertinent departments, childcare licensing included, were stakeholder to work collaborative, collaboratively on a document, pamphlet, online, you know, information source to distribute to all childcare providers and summer youth programs, including those run by non-for-profits, licensed childcare providers, and any other government-operated programs, the guidelines for operations to meet federal, state, and local COVID-19 requirements, which also includes the governor's order.
That's a motion by Commissioner Overman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you. And really, I appreciate your efforts, Commissioner Overman. It's nice to have somebody else on the board that cares about our kids. And you.
Well, that was a kind of a shot.
No, no, no. I mean, I, sorry about that. I think you know.
You just did as a focus, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, as a focus. Okay, so.
You want to vote, don't you?
I do. Well, we do, we do. But, and so Commissioner Miller and I would like to ask you to make sure, okay, so Early Learning Coalition that oversees school readiness and VPK, they're doing communication now with USF and some other people. So I guess, so that we don't have a lot of separate information out there, I guess, could you just add in your motion to have communications collaborate and coordinate with the Early Learning Coalition and the Children's Board to make sure that we have a consistent unified message?
Is that an amendment?
Would, yes, I'll make an amendment.
That's a amendment by Commissioner Merman.
I'll support that.
Second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. You know, I've been trying to figure out how, and listening to everything I could about how you get back to having children together in times of COVID-19, how you have third graders social distance, and what will happen and become of all the summer programs, the daycare, everything you need for many parents to get back to work, but also even the schools come August. Even the universities are dealing with this, and of course, they're in the best position in terms of being able to have people over 18 understand at least the, the critical needs of this. You know, the University of California system has already said that they're not opening in the, in the fall. So my, I've also talked with a not-for-profit in town. I've been in contact with them because they were going back and forth about how to open their summer camp and what protocol and what they should be doing. I just think this is critical. So I very much appreciate you putting this forward. My problem with it is, is that right now, all the guidelines are coming out from the state, from Governor DeSantis and the state offices. And I don't want to put the burden on our legal staff of issuing, as important as I think it is to get these guidelines out there and make them available as best we can, I don't want to put that burden on our legal office of trying to interpret or redefine or have something that doesn't match the state protocol come out from the state. And I'm wondering, Commissioner Overman, if instead, because I do think this is extremely important, and thank you, if we could prepare a letter, direct staff to prepare a letter to state officials or the governor's office, to have them issue some clear guidance and specific guidance that we could then, or they could provide to all our daycare, our summer camps, our other childcare programs? Because I, I'd like to ask Attorney Beck, Ms. Beck, Ms. Beck, do you, do you feel like our attorney's office, I'm afraid of people relying legally on us, I'm afraid of the position that this would put us in, if you would, if you feel comfortable doing this on, on a county level?
Yes, Commissioner, this is Christine Beck, and we would certainly strive to work with everybody and, and provide as much guidance as possible. You do raise a valid question that there will be some perhaps challenges in, in interpreting some of the state guidelines, but we would certainly endeavor to, you know, do our best to, to, to provide that, or perhaps maybe even seek, seek guidance, I suppose, from the state if we could. So perhaps that would be something that we could be directed to do if necessary. And, and with that, you know, like I said, we would, we would do our best to, to, to comply with the directive from the board.
I, I guess I would like to make a substitute motion that we.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yes?
You want to make a substitute motion that's going to wipe out the amendment?
Could I respond to Commissioner Kemp, please?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I, part of the reason I brought this forward is because it is, there's not really direct conflict between any of the organizations.
Right.
There, all the rules are there, but each of the different organizations takes a different perspective. But at the end of the day, the governor's order says childcare must be provided in stable groups of 10 or fewer, inclusive childcare providers in the group. Children and childcare providers shall not change from one group to another. If more than one group of children is cared for at a facility, each group shall be in separate rooms. Groups shall not mix or interact with each other. Across the board, there's lots of guidance on how to do things smartly or correctly, but at the end of the day, those are the three bullet points that's in the governor's order. And when we go to the various different sources for guidelines on how to keep children safe, those three bullet points aren't there. It's like they get skipped over. So all of those guidelines, if you were to follow those, still exist, but there's no one place to give operators an opportunity to do it well, do it safely, and, and be able to say, this is what it's going to cost me to get there, to do that, so that we can provide the support to those organizations that will help get our businesses open because their employees can go to work and their kids are in a safe place. So I'm not suggesting that legal is not going to be part of the interpretation of what the governor's order says, and we are not going to reinterpret what, you know, the state of Florida's children guidelines or the Department of Education guidelines or, like I said, there's like six different sources for these small businesses to try and interpret how they need to operate. We as government, as policymakers, will set the tone for the best practice to meet the guidelines given the governor's order, and that's our job. And I would love to be able to help these businesses open, because right now, they're completely overwhelmed. They're having difficulty getting workers to come back to work, and parents need a resource. We have to act on this quickly. That's my, that was why I brought this forward. Thank you.
Mr. Kemp?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those clarifications. So I, my concern was not that, I mean, I just assumed that the legal would be involved in it, and not that it would be conflicting of anything, just that we mimic whatever comes down from the state and that we provide that since that is the, you know, primary guidance in terms of what we're, to have the same message and to have the same guideline. So that was my concern, and I didn't know what exactly or how clear the governor's guidelines were, and it seems like maybe they could be more explicit, but, but that was, that would be helpful, I think.
Mr. Merman, you recognize?
This is quick. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been working with Christine Beck on this probably for the last month and a half interpretations, and yes, they don't want to be interpreting the, what is being put down. But honestly, the governor has relied on the CDC guidelines or anybody involved in childcare. And I think there are people out there that don't know how to read a governor's order. They, you know, and this is why I think Commissioner Overman is trying to address, is that they just don't understand the language, and that's why the communication unfolding is so important to take that CDC guideline and communicate that to somebody that can understand exactly what it means to them. And I think that's what the governor's office, really on all childcare stuff, has deferred to the Department of Children, Families, and CDC guidelines. And so that's kind of where we're at. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Sorry, I just wanted to wrap this up and, and see if, if there were any other comments and ask for approval. Thank you.
Okay, we have an amendment by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Please call a vote, roll call on the amendment, on the amendment.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
We're now back on the motion as amended. Senior, for the discussion, please call the roll on the motion.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill?
Your next item is G1. It's an update report, Audrey Ziegler and Ron Barton on the CARES Act allocations and spending that you all approved at your last meeting.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Audrey, Audrey Ziegler, Social Services Department. I do have a one-page information sheet to share, and if I can't do so, Mr. Brewer is on standby to help me out with that. Can you all see that?
Can you make it a little larger?
It's pretty small. I hope so. I can't see either. I don't know. James, can you help me out?
Audrey, use the presenter view, and that might help.
All right, let's see where that is.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I believe this is in our backup material as well.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't see that. I have it, I have a hard copy here if you all have one to reference.
No, go ahead. We have, we have it in our backup. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if I can remove it. It's not too distracting. I don't want to touch anything and make anything go away. Okay, so if you'll recall, Commissioner Kemp asked at the last board meeting that we provide some updates to the board as it relates to the Rapid Response and Recovery R3 program. She did ask for the information to be more of a budgetary overview, but because of where we are with the program, and I'll, I'll walk you through some steps, I thought it was more important for today's update to give you some more information about our next steps and where we are with our eligibility determination, rather than a budget overview, which I think we can cover in the next two weeks. That said, I do have some figures to share with you, but when I put this document together to have it uploaded for the board, I didn't have the, the funding information that was updated at that time. So the program overview, this is the $15 million that was dedicated from the CARES funding to address crisis intervention. It was issued to the Social Services Department, and it's been made available to assist residents who have had a reduction of wage or are newly employed due to COVID-19 pandemic. The funding aims to prevent recipients from experiencing further financial hardship or additional consequences to living conditions by assisting them with their basic living expenses. And by basic living expenses, the funds are being dedicated from this program to cover two months of past due shelter expenses, so that's rent or mortgage, and up to one month of utility, and that is water and/or utility. The basic eligibility requirements that we've asked for our applicants to provide is very simple. Proof that they're a Hillsborough County resident, a valid photo ID so that we know the customer we're serving is who they say they are, past due verification of those expenses for their shelter and their utility, verification that they have had a significant loss of wage and that the significant loss of wage is due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we also wanted to validate that they did not have liquid assets available to cover those expenses so that we can make funding available to households that did not have such a savings. We launched the program April 27th, and we had dedicated 17 call center representatives utilizing staff from library services and the county main call center, and so I want to thank them for that. We will be concluding the call center efforts shortly, so I want to thank them for their service and working alongside of social services. In addition to the call center accepting applications, we also had an online application where residents were able to self-serve and apply for the program without talking to a call center representative. So where we are now, we've currently dedicated 15 of our case managers or eligibility specialists within the department to be dedicated to, a dedicated team to determining eligibility for this program. We have four team leads who are validating the payments that are being authorized, and we have 15 eligibility specialists contacting residents, looking through their documents. Residents I'm speaking of are the applicants, making sure that the documentation they provide matches the scenario that they presented to us, and determining that they are eligible so that we stay in compliance with the CARES funding. We want to make sure that everybody, like I mentioned before, is a Hillsborough County resident, has been impacted by COVID-19 loss of wage and so on. So of the 4,891 applicants, you'll recall that I mentioned last time that were screened, we started. within the department to be dedicated to, a dedicated team to determining eligibility for this program. We have four team leads who are validating the payments that are being authorized, and we have 15 eligibility specialists contacting residents, looking through their documents. Residents I'm speaking of are the applicants, making sure that the documentation they provide matches the scenario that they presented to us, and determining that they are eligible so that we stay in compliance with the CARES funding. We want to make sure that everybody, like I mentioned before, is a Hillsborough County resident, has been impacted by COVID-19 loss of wage and so on. So of the 4,891 applicants, you'll recall that I mentioned last time that were screened. We've started to break those down, and 423 of those households we've already determined are not eligible for various reasons, some of which have to do with the eligibility criteria I've mentioned. 200 of those applicants were duplicates. While you know thousands and thousands of people tried to reach us and apply, I'm not sure how, but 200 households managed to apply twice. So those, we've also eliminated their second application. 2,024 of those pre-screened applicants have been assigned to those 15 eligibility specialists I mentioned above, and we're currently working with those applicants now, looking at their documents, determining eligibility, and actually going ahead and making direct vendor payments on their behalf. 2,244 of those applicants had never responded to our attempt to reach them to provide the eligibility documents. So what we've decided to do is work with the Emergency Operations Center utilizing the Everbridge system to come up with some sort of messaging to follow up with those applicants and find out maybe why they didn't apply, or if we can help them apply using a different platform. So we're really not sure what happened with those. Some of the feedback we've received, not much, but some of it is that a lot of applicants were under the impression that a check would have been written to them for kind of an income replacement program, and when that wasn't the case, they decided not to apply to upload all of their documentation and apply for assistance. But again, I think we should find out a little bit more about what happened to those over 2,244 residents, and so as we report, we'll be able to give you further, you know, further information on how those panned out. We are also working with Metropolitan Ministries to finalize the agreement with them so that they can be one of the providers. As we begin to open up for Phase Two, there will be a significant amount of funding left over from the 15 million from Phase One, so we do anticipate opening the program again. It will be very methodical, very thoughtful, so that we don't overload your systems again, the county systems, the phone systems. And we're working with IIO. We had a very good meeting with them yesterday, and we're looking at a self-serve option where the applicant will be able to apply without talking to a call center rep. They'll be able to apply on their own with a lot of direction and a lot of messaging embedded in there, and then an opportunity to upload their documents again with a lot of messaging and a lot of streamlining of the process so that it's a very easy process. And what we're hoping to do with that process is to be able to accept applications more expeditiously and process them without relying so heavily on as many human resources. So that concludes what I have available for you on the one page, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Let me thank you and your staff and everyone else, Mr. Merrill and all, that it works diligently to help the people of this county that are suffering. I know you worked around the clock. I've been with you on the phone quite a bit also, because I get phone calls and those, but people just don't like the way some things are going, or they have complaints, and you helped me with that tremendously. So I want to thank you, your staff, Mr. Merrill and all his staff, for putting this program together and doing what we can do to help those who need it the most. So I want to thank you there for that. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
I just wanted to thank you once again, Audrey.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Hi, am I, can you hear me?
Can't hear you, Commissioner Kemp.
Can you hear me now?
Very, very lightly.
You can hear me now.
I can hear you.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank you, Audrey, for all the work that you've done. I appreciate these updates, and this is exactly what I wanted, actually, less the budget, more the, I just wanted to know where people in need were, if they were getting that help, how it was working, and what we needed to think about in terms of that as a commission. So I thank you. I know that you all have been working really hard and have really done remarkably creative ways to kind of redirect people and get the help of the library staff, for instance. So thank you so much, and good update, good to hear.
Thank you so much, and I have to recognize the Social Services Team and the IIO Team, all the departments I mentioned, but the Social Services Team, those eligibility specialists, while before I made no secret that we might have been a little bit overstaffed, we are currently not overstaffed. We have them working double duty, so I will definitely pass along, you know, your appreciation to them because they are working weekends, nights, and everything possible to get these applications processed and making sure that customers get these services, because we do know that at some point, utility services will resume disconnection for non-payment, and we know that what's looming is the evictions, you know, resuming as well. So I want to publicly thank them along with you all for everything they're doing, because it's difficult doing work on the phone and trying to calm people's nerves and, you know, explain the expectation to them and how they must be compliant. That's to speak to what Commissioner Miller said, and him and I have talked quite a bit. People are frustrated with the process. They want a very easy process, but because of the compliance part, and we want to stay, you know, want to stay out of jail these days, it's very important for us to make sure that people are eligible, so we're working as quickly as we can, but there is also, you know, a level of patience that we're asking everyone to have with us because it is a somewhat cumbersome process. So thank you for asking for the update. I appreciate it.
Okay. I have a motion to receive the report, the update.
Second.
Hold on. Ron, did you want to give them an update as well?
Yes, sir, if I could. Commissioner Miller, Commissioners, it's Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator for Economic Prosperity, and wanted to give you the other half of the update on the CARES Act activities. As you can imagine in listening to Audrey as well, it's been a busy 14 days since the last meeting, and what I wanted to do is give you just some of the placeholders for the activities that we're engaged with and kind of what's next. First and foremost, as you listen to Audrey, and we mentioned this when we presented to you last meeting, we want to move forward with a third-party vendor to not only prepare an online system for application to the process, but we need that scale and that depth backup from a major entity to help us implement these programs. I'll give you two stats that I know you've heard, but they're probably relevant to what we have before us. There's over 40,000 businesses. There's over 100,000 people unemployed. So depending on the programs that we address, from workforce training to the grants for small businesses, as you can imagine, the scale of interest and potential applications could be very overwhelming. Everything Audrey's experienced, but on steroids. So it's very important that we spend this time in the next few days to finalize a contract with a third-party vendor that can actually create that online portal for applications, being able to automate as much as possible that application process, making it smoother and easier for our small businesses and our folks. Granted, there'll always be exceptions, and one of the reasons that we want to use a third-party vendor is to have that kind of scale behind us in terms of administrative support for compliance. So that's ongoing, but it also, I am hopeful we will have resolved that and entered into a third-party contract within days. The second thing I wanted to give you an update on is that we're also finalizing, we're in the throes of finalizing a contract with Career Source Tampa Bay. If you recall, we talked to you two weeks ago about a significant workforce training, workforce repurposing initiative for our community, 100,000 or more unemployed, of which many, many, many will not return to the industry they worked in previously. And so we want to send them and train them in industries that are going to be hiring in the near future versus maybe the ones that they were in. And so that's a big piece of the strategy that we propose to you. Career Source Tampa Bay is one of our key team leaders on that initiative. They were in the workforce training business before pre-COVID. They are really going to be in it as we come out of this and start into recovery. And so we've been working out not only the details of those programs, but also a contract with them so that they can be, they can use part of these CARES dollars for the training programs, but also be the quarterback associated with that part of the strategy, so they can work with private nonprofit training providers as well as our institutions like HCC, USF, and others. And so we hope as well to have that contract with them within days. We've been running hard. The third thing I wanted to give you an update on is kind of what's next in terms of the details. So from the concepts that we shared with you two weeks ago, we are kind of bringing it in for a landing on the details. So what are the criteria associated with small businesses? Who is going to qualify, and in some cases, who might not qualify for these initial set of grants? As I shared with you before, very oriented towards a first opportunity for our small businesses in distressed areas, but then to segue very quickly into small businesses throughout our community. I mentioned that we are building a county-wide program, so this is businesses whether they're in Temple Terrace, businesses whether in Plant City, City of Tampa, or unincorporated. It's agnostic geographically, and it's going to be oriented towards small business throughout our community. We're going to have those details fine-tuned literally within two to three days. And one of the things that I think is very important is that we back-channel with the EDC in our chambers and our ED staff partners at the three cities, and we want to make sure that we have had a good dialogue with them, that we didn't have a blind spot. I think we're starting to craft a very strong program with lots of appropriate guidance to deal with compliance, as Audrey had mentioned earlier. This isn't just a grant program for people that have had difficulties. They have to show clear COVID impacts, and we have to have a documentation process that does that. We will do that, but it's still, the details are very important. I would still say to you, even though we have a bunch of balls in the air, that it's our intention to launch in early June. One of the guiding factors will not necessarily be the crafting of the program. It will actually be the beta testing of the online platform, because we want it to work when we go public. And then the last comment I would make is one that you've heard on your agenda here in several cases, with Dr. Eisenberg, with Audrey's comments, and clearly Mike's guidance all along. Communication, as we get ready to launch, communication of what this is, what it isn't, how is it going to be administered is going to be very important. So we'll be working with Leana as well as our partner cities to make sure that we're adequately and accurately communicating what we're about to roll out, because we want to do that in advance. So that's a, that's an update. It's very much many balls in the air, but we are, we're getting close, and I would say by the next meeting, we'll have a very definitive and hopefully very much closed items with a report about when we can actually anticipate launching. So with that, I'd certainly open it up for any questions, but as always, I appreciate your support, and we look forward to bringing this in for a landing soon.
Good job. I don't see any questions at this time, so we have a motion to receive the report. Mr. Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to receive the update. Sina for discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
Yes, thank you, and thanks so much to Ron and Audrey for all your spectacular work and to your teams. I know how hard you're working. That just leaves the one item that was removed from consent by Commissioner Overman for highlighting, which is A9.
Commissioner Overman, some of us are getting old, and our bodies start to tell us something, so be brief as you possibly can.
Okay, and of course, I put all my papers away because I thought we were almost done. I just want to bring back to the board that the resolution for approval to add the positions that our fellow commissioners had asked us to consider, a representative from Temple Terrace and Plant City in the law enforcement area, both municipalities were able to agree and provide us resources. We are adding the commissioner's status of women and the live expert positions, but I'm also really wanted to highlight that we are now able and have offered an opportunity and are pleased to see that this has happened, that our chief judge from the Circuit Court as well as the Public Defender's Office was, position for each of them have been added to the resolution in order to make sure that we have the full court situation, the legal situation, all on team deck in order to address how lives are being impacted by human trafficking and how we find and impact the outcome. Chief Judge Figueroa agreed to not only participate on the resolution, but also agreed to serve because he believed it was so important. In addition to that, when we reached out to the Public Defender's Office, Public Defender Chief Julian Holt also asked to participate and to serve. So those positions will come back to you for appointment at our next meeting, I believe, but today I just wanted to bring that resolution forward. Thank you.
So you want to move the, approve A9?
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
A motion by Commissioner Overman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Merman to approve A9. Sina for discussion, please call the roll on A9.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
That just leaves future issues, if any.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize briefly.
Thank you. I just have been concerned, I've been in contact with a constituent who had a COVID-19 test, and today is day 13, they had it done through the county services. Today is day 13 without a result, and I had heard about this at the beginning, but thought kind of the problem had been taken care of. In order for us to get people back to work, people back to school, for us to do anything, I think testing is the most important thing, and knowing the results in a timely manner, I think, is extremely important. So I'm asking that staff at the next meeting, bring back a report where we can get a timeline and understand when people are getting tested and when they're getting the results, and if there's a problem with this at this time.
Mr. Merrill.
We, every, yeah, every EPG meeting, every EPG meeting, we give that report, and we can certainly provide it. I thought we were providing it to the county commission as well, but we will certainly do that.
That's a report, that's why I was calling Mr. Merrill, there's a report on every meeting, and I think that would answer your question, Commissioner Kemp, before having to bring something back. If you still want to bring it back, the next meeting you can, but that report that is given by Mr. Tim Dudley identifies everything that's going on, how many people are being tested, which is increasing every week, but if you want to have that on the agenda, we can for next meeting, but Mr. Merrill's going to get to that report.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask Tim, if you're listening, if you can just contact Commissioner Kemp's office and get that information to her quickly.
Do you, do you have the, do you report back the number of days people wait for their report to come from the test to the number of days before they get the results?
Yes, and we've been tracking that, and so, yeah, that's part of, that's part of the overall report.
Okay, thank you. Sorry that I haven't quite seen that.
I'll make sure you get it.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you. This is quick. This is, May is Water Safety Month, and we did present a proclamation to
office and, and get that information to her quickly.
Do you, do you have the num, do you report back the number of days people wait for their report to come from the test to the number of days before they get the results?
Yes, and we, we've been tracking that. And so, yeah, that's part of, that's part of the overall report.
Okay, thank you. Sorry that I haven't quite seen that.
I'll make sure you get it.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you. This is quick. This is, May is Water Safety Month, and we did present a proclamation to the children's board at one of their meetings. I just want to highlight it because of the people working from home due to the virus right now that get distracted, they're stressed out, and I think there could be dangerous consequences. I think it's just to, you know, we're already seeing a tragic increase in child drownings this year, and we don't want to get any worse. So I think we're, you know, the children's board has a mobile swim program. I don't know how they're going to work that with the COVID crisis, and I'll be able to give more information about that later. But, you know, it only takes a second for a child to be out of sight, for tragedy to strike, and I just wanted to highlight that, as we do usually every year at a board meeting, but weren't able to this year. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, I'm very interested in that information, too, that Commissioner Pat Kemp mentioned. I haven't seen it, maybe, you know, those of you that are on the EPG are, are getting those reports and we're not, but I am also hearing from constituents about this problem. So I would like that.
Make sure you get the report. So Dudley will get to that report. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Sorry, I undid my way.
Hand went down. Okay. Okay. I see no more hands, and that's good for us, because it's getting late. So seeing no further business to come before us, Mr. Merrill, is there anything else you need to bring forth?
No, sir, we're done.
Okay. Thank you very much. You all take care. We adjourn.
Thank you, thank you. Bye.